Well, it's three o'clock. We will call the study session for March 27th to order. And I'll look to city staff to see if you have some comments to make before the presentation.
Sure. As you well know, we had a public-private partnership with Slana Baseball Enterprises previously. They did work on Dean Evans and also did work at South High. And we're in the midst of, you authorized increasing the transient guest tax to fund city improvements to baseball facilities. Bill Burke turf is a primary item. Another item is trying to address the runoff off of the runway at what is now Berkeley Family Recreation Area. And Kenny Hancock, on behalf of Slana Baseball Enterprises, approached us and asked about the possibility of SBE raising additional funds and pursuing another phase of improvements at Berkeley Family Recreation Area. Conversation we had was knowing from past governing body conversations that there would be questions about the city's ability to fund replacement of additional turf when the time came. And I knew that that was an analysis that we needed to do on the staff level, and we've done that, and I'm prepared to speak to that at the conclusion here. But wanted to give Mr. Hancock the opportunity to make a presentation to you about their proposed second round.
All right. Well, thank you, Mike. Kenny Hancock, 1831 Hillcrest Lane here in Slana. I assume we still have to do the same protocol. I really truly hope that I'm not up here two and a half years from now like I was on the first time we went around with this.
Hopefully COVID won't hit either.
You're right.
All right. We're Slana Baseball Enterprises. I'm on the board of directors, have been for several decades. Laurie Bridigam is here with me, also a board member at Slana Baseball Enterprises. As Mike said, we reconstructed Dean Evans and did South High School. Now, we kind of want to, we're calling it Phase Two of the original program that we had in mind. And so we'd kind of like to finish this and so that Slana can have two stadiums. Next slide, please. Thanks. For those of you who don't know us, Slana Baseball Enterprises, we go back clear to 1984. Byron Tomlin's is also on our board. He's not here today. He's actually one of the original members of Slana Baseball Enterprises. I was not. I came along about 10 years later. But we've been here since 1984. Many of you recognize the name Dean Evans. Dean Evans was the original philanthropist here in town. We're kind of the successor organization really for baseball and now softball to Dean Evans. Twenty-year partnership, well, actually 20 more, 20-plus years, I say that, don't I, with Dean Evans. We are sponsoring five youth teams nowadays. We used to only have three. We are now up to five. Sixty-five approximately youth, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less. We are an accredited 501(c)(3) and 13-member Board of Directors. 1991, well, it was 19, it's 1976. The fairgrounds tore down the old Blue Jay Stadium. For about 15 years, Slana did not have a place to play baseball. And in 1991, Slana Baseball Enterprises came to the city then and provided, I believe it was two-thirds of the money, and built the original Dean Evans Stadium. Then, of course, in 2021, we came with our proposal and provided 100% of the funding for that. Next slide. We're gonna, there's quite a few slides here, but I won't spend a lot of time on most of them. Phase One, we completed that in March of 2021 in time for the 2021 season for Kansas Wesleyan and all the high schools. And then, of course, the summer programs that really consists of Slana baseball. Everybody knows what's out there. If you haven't been there, I encourage you to go out and take a look. It is absolutely an amazing facility, and might be a little biased, but it's incredible place to play ball. New restrooms and concessions have been completed with umpire dressing rooms. And I think it's a big thing to note, umpires are probably tired of being yelled at by coaches and well-meaning dads, but that's getting very difficult to find umpires for games these days. And literally, some games are only having one umpire, from what I'm being told. One of the things that we did to help our program and the programs that are using the field was build umpire dressing rooms. And you're going to see later just how incredible they are. We are having no problem getting umpires now for the games up there. Okay, this is a slide from Visit Slana, and we asked them what kind of an impact baseball and softball were having on Slana. And you can see, I'll let you guys read this at your leisure. We don't have to do it now. It's talking about the process they go through to establish the economic turnover. I think 1.6 is probably the turnover number that we use. Next slide. And here is some numbers. 2022 alone, baseball, not including softball, baseball in Slana brought in $2.8 million in economic revenues. This is an acknowledgement from KESHA. As you guys know, every year, it's just about the time that we want to hold a four-A baseball or softball tournament. The rains come as often as night. It seems to be a real problem. Last year was no different. Dean Evans was great because it was fully turfed and ready to play on. They normally hold the four-A softball at Bill Burke. It was a swamp, unplayable, and they moved it over to four, the four-A softball to Slana South, two fully-turfed fields. And KESHA is now committed to playing the four-A state softball there, I'll assume, on a permanent basis until something else changes. And it kept, honestly, it kept the four-A state baseball and softball in Slana because they were going to have to move it at some point, but now they won't have to. And that freed up Bill Burke. And I believe that now that Bill Burke is no longer hosting the four-A state softball tournament, there is another tournament that's been scheduled for use at Bill Burke this year. So it's going to bring even more economic boon to the city because there'll be the four-A state and a softball tournament there as well for this coming year. Renovations we did, obviously, we fully turfed the surface, not just the infield, dugout renovations, 480-volt lighting power system. That was a disaster waiting to happen. We replaced all of that. And of course, that premier seating area that you guys have probably seen, we have some slides here in just a moment to look at it. New entrance, ticket booth, new fencing everywhere, including new security fencing, and of course, the toilet I talked about earlier. Okay, here's some before and after. That's the beautiful Dean Evans Stadium, right before we started the renovations of it. Next slide, there's what it looks like afterwards. There's the pavilion seating area, dugouts with the benches broken down, disrepair. And of course, the next slide, we, we turfed the dugout. We put a barrier, a protection barrier screen up in front. And I think we could just get rid of the seats because nobody sits in those anymore. Everybody's just standing up there next to the barrier. Next slide. There's an aerial of the original Dean Evans. And don't move, don't move the slide yet, but it doesn't look as bad as you might have thought from this view. But believe me, if you were trying to play on that, I think at one time, Kansas Wesleyan, their opponents didn't want to play because the infield was truly absolutely horrible. And any rain at all, and it was, it was a muddy mess, and they couldn't plan it. Next slide shows what it now looks like. Never a rain out unless it's actually raining during the game. Next slide. Here is the former, here's the interior of what was the former concession stand that hadn't been used for several years. We turned it into a handicap women's, handicap-access women's toilet, which is pretty amazing now considering what we had before. We also renovated the other to existing restrooms. This is the umpire dressing room. It's the lounge. Next slide will show that we have their own private changing room and a shower, toilet, and everything they need. Next slide. This is, this is a batting cage. This is the recent thing we did. We put some turf down on the existing batting cages, and we put new nets up, or we are putting new nets up. I can't remember, Larry. Do you know where we're at with that? That we either are putting new ones up, or we have put them up, but at no cost to the city. Next slide. Okay, I know, I know this isn't part of Slana's, City of Slana's purvey, but we did the South High softball complex as well. Literally did the exact same thing over there as we did at Dean, with the exception that we actually built two stadiums over there. And baseball needs two stadiums is one of the reasons we're here today. Right now, the new toilet and concession room, it's under construction. It should be done within the next 30 days. Those fields are now lighted. We have a covered grandstand. And now we have the ability to livestream. And it's going to be a great facility within the next 30 days. There's an aerial view. The next slide will show another one. There is the, one of the infield. You can see the construction going on. Looks a lot different over there. This is probably 45 days ago. So most of the concrete's now poured. The grandstand, the covering is on that, and the building is actually done. It's just the interior finishes aren't complete, but it looks a lot different over there now. Next slide. There's an aerial view. Pay no attention to right center field. The lights are actually a little bit better than that. What a reason, the controller wasn't working that night. And so it's a little, it looks a little dark over there. So now we're moving into what we're here for, honestly, what we're here for. We want to look at both Wilbur Field and Matson Field. And for those, you probably know, Wilbur is the field immediately north of Dean Evans Stadium. So here's what it looks like currently. Pretty rough shape. I think that Sacred Heart actually plays at least some of their home games on this field. And I was out on it again just, just the other day, and it's in really terrible shape. At one time, it really wasn't too bad, but it's, it's really deteriorated. There's another aerial view showing just how bad the infield is and the outfield grass itself. Next slide shows some of the deterioration of the equipment over there, the L-screens that are really unusable over there for batting practice pitching. And there's one that's actually being considered as usable. I'm not sure if, if you can hit it very well that I would want to stand there and throw any BP with that in front of me personally. Next slide. There's the bullpen, what's left of it over at Wilbur. And I think the next slide's going to show you the condition of, well, there's the catcher's box. And the next slide shows the pitcher's mound. Good way to tear an ankle up. Next slide. Now we go down to James Matson, the existing conditions down there. Here's an aerial view. It's always been kind of a fun field with that short right field porch fence. It's, a lot of people say it's too short, but I haven't seen that many high school kids hit home runs there. But it's, it's, it could be a neat stadium. Next slide, please. There's the dugouts. I don't think, and this is actually probably the best view of the dugout. Inside, they're worse than this. I don't think anyone would disagree that those dugouts desperately need to be replaced. Next slide shows some of the grandstand, the uneven concrete that's back there. And that, that rotten, oh, well, let's look at that. Yeah, thank you. That, that green building back there, that little booth, is, is actually a scorer's table. And it looks better from this, as bad as it looks from here, this is the best view I could get because it's really bad if you get up close to it. It's rotted and desperate need of repair. Next slide. This was an ongoing problem in right field corner where the drainage just constantly is washing out. Those, those concrete things are, are barriers for a parking lot. And unfortunately, they were, rebar's sticking up. And hopefully, no one has been hurt yet, but that is, to me, an accident waiting to happen. That's something we need to address, and we would hope to maybe address it if this project moves forward. Existing toilets, I think they're in reasonable shape. Our goal is to go in and completely refurbish them, new fixtures, new valves, so that they're good for the next 20 years. Do anything to the structure itself. It's really great, actually. You get out of the sun, and I think something like that would be great down at Dean Evans, quite frankly. But we'll do, we intend to do some upgrades to that as well. Okay, Phase Two. Let's go on to this, the next slide. What we want to do is renovate Wilbur Field as a second fully-turfed premier stadium. Now, it's not going to be as grandiose as Dean Evans because Dean has that huge wraparound grandstand. And that's kind of cost prohibitive. But we want to make it equivalent to Dean Evans from a playing surface. We'll obviously have to put new lighting in and all the dugouts and bullpens and all the complimentary stuff. But we would be right next to Dean Evans that way. It's very handy. If you've ever coached, at least in high school, and you have a varsity and a JV game going on at the same time, it's real handy to be able to get a JV player to come over and run, or even a reliever to come in and pitch. And that's the reason we settled on Wilbur Field because of its proximity to Dean. And then we want to do miscellaneous facility improvements at James Matson. All of this is as fundraising allows. We did a great job, mostly Byron Tomlin's did a great job last, last time around, raised quite a bit of money. The economy isn't quite as good this year, but we still feel confident that, that we can raise the money that we need to raise. Next slide. Wilbur improvements. And this is budgetary. I don't know, did you give them the budget that I sent you?
I wasn't sure I was supposed to.
Oh.
So no, I didn't.
Okay.
I can.
No, and you don't have to do it now, but everyone, there's no secrets here. I put together a budget, and I wrote "budgetary" on it in red. And just so everybody knows what that means is, that does not mean that when the project is over with, that Wilbur Field's going to cost $3,060,000. It means that's my very educated guess at this, okay? And that's, all a budget is, is a series of compensating errors. That's kind of the, that's what it's normally called. Now, the good news is, on the major pieces of construction, such as the entire turf project and all the fencing, I already have quotes for that. So those numbers are very solid, and we feel great about those, which is about two-thirds of the project itself. So we feel good about the number. I just want to give that, give that caution because last time it was, well, you said this, and here's what we got. I want to make sure I don't get in, back myself into that corner again this time. Once again, fully-turfed field, bullpens will be turfed. Dean Evans is a massive place. We were able to put the bullpens inside of Dean Evans. We don't have that room at Wilbur, or Matson for that matter. So they would just be located immediately outside, which is really more typical anyway. But they'd still be double-wide bullpens for both home and visitor. Of course, batting cages. There is batting cages there. Obviously, at Wilbur, those would be renovated or most likely relocated. All of that area in there that we saw on the existing photos would be removed and, and cleaned up. New dugouts and dugout seating. The dugouts will be similar in size to Dean Evans, and the seating will be exactly the same as it is at Dean Evans. Covered grandstand. If you've been by South High School, or if you haven't, go drive by, you'll see the covered grandstand I'm talking about. That's what our vision is for Wilbur's, to have one identical to that. And then on the side, that's the center right behind the home plate section, off to the side on both sides on the wings, we would like to put an elevated platform, meaning we'll put a pre-stress concrete slab, I don't know, 15 by 20, and we'll support it with steel structures. You can get underneath it for weather protection and out of the sun, but there'll be stairs that climb up, and you can sit on it with railings that need a coat, of course. You'd be able to sit up there with your lawn chairs as you want to and watch both Dean Evans Stadium and Wilbur at the same time if you wanted to. And that's a great thing for the parents that have kids playing on both or whatever. So that's our vision for the seating there. Well, there would be a press box. We think that's an important area. All-new foul line and homerun fencing. We envisioned six-foot-tall PVC-coated black chain length fence, just like as at Dean. Has to have a new lighting system because there is none, so that would be an LED system. And what we do at Dean, or what we do at Wilbur, we're going to have to do at Dean as well because we don't want to have Dean's lights and Wilbur's lights look differently. So we'd have to decide on the pole height. Dean Evans has 80-foot poles, not 100s, but most stadiums of any age are 80s. But we would replace the, the bulbs themselves, the luminaries, with LED on Dean that would match the exact lighting that we would plan for Wilbur. Next slide. There's an aerial view. We didn't have quite enough time to get it really rendered really well like we did before, but you, you kind of get a feel for it. And you see where Dean is in the lower right-hand corner, fully-turfed. We would, the right-hand, the right-field fencing, it's only about 302 feet down the line. Everyone says it's too short. I know a guy named Roger Maris that would disagree. He loved batting in Yankee Stadium at 298-foot fences. So honestly, what we would do is, our vision is to do similar what is what it's at James Matson, make a double-height fence, so it'd be at least 12, if not 14 or 16 foot tall. That effectively makes it 330, 335 feet. So at some point, it's not a short porch, even though it looks like it is. And the homerun fencing would all be changed. We have some room in center field and on around to left field, so we'll make those homerun fences reasonable length, like 385, 390. We have room to do that. It's just right field. We are, we are land-constricted. We can't move it back very far. Next slide. James Matson, much smaller budget at James Matson. We're going to leave it as grass unless we get incredibly lucky with fundraising, and then we'd have to ask you for permission to either turf the infield or turf everything. But right now, our goal is to just improve what's there. And what's there needs a lot of improvement. Put in new bullpens, the batting cages that, well, they don't exist now. We'd put a new cage in, tear the dugouts that are there out, put in all-new dugouts that would be identical to Wilbur Field. They would look the same. Improve the bleacher seating. Right now, we're not envisioning a covered grandstand. Again, a funding provides it. We'll probably come back and ask for permission, but right now, the covered grandstand, to give you an idea, is about $100,000. We paid for that over at South. That's the reason I happen to know that number. And if we get lucky and are very successful, we'd probably consider putting a covered grandstand at, at James Matson as well. And then, of course, like I said earlier, upgrades to men's and women's toilets. And honestly, this is just our vision. This is our wish list. We'll sit down with the city and decide if, if they have other things that are on the wish list that we both can agree to. Probably the only thing we're going to not be very flexible on is we want to fully turf a field. We're not, we don't want to just do an infield. We want it fully turf. There's no chance of a game being rained out unless it's raining at that point. Next slide. There's the aerial view. I wish James Matson looked that good, but it, right field's about the same situation as it is over at Wilbur Field. It's, it's a nice place to play, quite frankly. And it's got, got a lot of amenities that are there that just needs some, some attention given to it. So now we're, now we're to the important part of this. Here's what we're asking, and I have one more thing to add, and I apologize for not putting, getting that on there. We're hoping that you'll join us in, if you'll, let me back up. If you'll remember, our first go-around, we asked for a 50-50 split, and because of COVID, that didn't happen. And we said, we just want to go forward. And we're glad we did, and we hope you guys are glad we did. And I'm going to throw this out. I'm thrilled that, that Bill Burke is nearing completion. Driving those last few nails is always, always the last hard nails to drive. But I, I'm thrilled that that's getting done. We're asking for a 70-30 split. That's even better than the 50-50 we asked for originally. We're asking today, and I know I can't get it today, but what we're asking is for approval from this board, or commission, to give us permission to move forward with fully turfing Wilbur Field and all the other amenities that we can, that the fundraising allows, and to fully approve us moving forward with the improvements that James Matson is funding allows. And the one other thing that I want, I'd like to have added to our request for today is, we want to be able to have the ability to do a naming rights for Wilbur Field. And we're not asking for additional money or anything like that, other than the 70-30 split. We just want to be able to name it. And we've talked to the Wilbur family, and they would be more than happy to let that field be named something else for, for a significant donation. They'll move the Wilbur Field name down to what we now call Tower Field, so it would still be named. But it gives us an opportunity to get some significant donor with their, if their name gets to be attached to another fully renovated stadium. So the ask is really to do what we did before. And this is a no-cost ask essentially. It's just permission, and we would have to follow the naming rights that, the, or the things that we had to follow before, all the paperwork that we did. So that's the fourth ask. And I think that's it, and I'm opening up for questions now.
Okay, do we want to go, go ahead and ask him questions before we go into the transient guest tax code? Yeah, let's go, if we could, we're going to go ahead and go through the current funding that was put together by the finance department. I think that might help us to, to look at the, the new proposal perhaps, so.
We only have one slide today, so. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. What Mike asked me to do was look at what our transient guest tax that we have dedicated to field improvements has been doing, what that looks like in the event that you would approve additional funding for additional turf, and how we go about replacing that turf when that need comes. Because that's, that's a big deal to us. When we need to replace it, we don't want it to get into a position where it's not in good shape again. So in 2022, our actual collection, which is, as you recall, we went to seven and a half percent transient guest tax to cover the, the field improvements. We collected about $316,000 in transient guest tax in 2022. So we're estimating before we finance for the, the Bill Burke project that we, that we've set aside two and a half million dollars for funding, that we'll, we'll collect another about $315,000 in 2023. The, the debt finance cost of that two and a half, two and a half million dollars is roughly about $309,000, depending on what interest rates come in at. This is estimated at 4% over 10 years. And then if we look at the replacement costs of turf, which is estimated by our professionals in the baseball world to be about 55% of original cost, we, we just did an analysis of what that would look like over time. And what we have to remember with this type of schedule is, it's going to happen every 10 years for every field. So every time Dean Evans needs to replace, be replaced in 10 years, it's going to need to be replaced again. So that just kind of overlaps itself. So what I wanted to do was at least get it, get us to the point where we're, we're replacing all four fields in one cycle so that we know kind of what that big picture is. So if we look at the dollars, today, we're paying, we'd be paying about $309,000 a year for debt financing for just the Bill Burke improvements. When we add the replacement for Dean Evans around 2032, the year 2032, which is about 10 years after it was put into place, and we, that, again, is an estimated timeframe. They, they say it could get 10 years to 12 years, but we want to be very conservative about that. That's about another $68,000 a year, which means we'd need about $377,000 in that particular for a couple of years to pay for both the debt on Bill Burke and the debt for replacement of Dean Evans. So that number comes into play. And then I add it into what happens when we get to Bill Burke, and we want to replace that, what, what happens to that number. And then we, obviously, the Bill Burke debt financing for the improvements has dropped off, but then we're adding in the replacement costs for Bill Burke. And then if we would go to Wilbur or another, and an additional field, I just wanted to get those numbers in here for you. So I believe in the analysis, the highest cost would be around, around $377,000 a year. As I mentioned earlier, today, we're collecting about $316,000 in transient guest tax. We do have those couple of years of funding that we haven't spent prior to that debt financing, so that funding is available to use in whatever way we wanted to do that. So I just wanted to present that to you to make sure that you kind of had a big picture of what that's going to look like. And if you have any questions about that, I can certainly try to answer them. As Kenny said, these are estimated numbers, our budget. As Kenny said, these are estimated numbers, our budgets. You know, we don't have anything to know what these are gonna be specifically, but they're commitments that we've made, especially on the $2.5 million on the Bill Burke improvements.
And I think one assumption that we made is just transient guest tax rates and revenue will increase over time, and we just kind of made a blanket assumption that it'll hopefully reasonably keep up with the cost of inflation of turf and that installation cost.
Correct.
The other thing that might be worth noting is, you know, our target, goal for committing our portion to, the original project was 4 million, and as Debbie indicated, the Bill Burke aspect of that is 2.5 million that we're trying to fund with the transient guest tax, and then there's another million and a half that you're funding independent of the transient guest tax by way of ARPA fund and fund balance.
The transient guest tax went to 7.5. What was it prior to that?
6.7.
6.7, I couldn't remember.
I think that's the right number. Sometimes I get 7.5, 7.75, so I think it's 7.5, 6.7 to 7.5.
I couldn't remember exactly what we, how much we increased it, so.
Yes.
Okay, we'll have questions for either Kenny, Mike, or Debbie. I'll start to my left. Carl?
I don't have any questions. I guess head and I would work, so without adding in requested money for the 30-70 split, if all we had to make provisions for now was the turf replacement, our current transient guest tax proceeds would pretty much get us through.
Except for those couple of years where that overlaps, those couple of years, it should. Like I said, like Mike said, that's the assumption is, the cost of replacement doesn't grow faster than the cost of transient guest tax.
Right, but any shortage we had, those two years would be relative pennies on the dollar compared to having to write a check to replace all the turf.
Correct.
At once. We would at least been budgeting for it and saved up most of the money.
Yep.
So, now, after 2033, it sounds like it's a long way off, but I guess it, yeah, it's 10 years, I guess. Still sounds like way in the future. We would have a little cushion, but I don't imagine that cushion would come close to paying a yearly debt on a million dollars if we were to borrow that.
No, typically, a million dollars, over 20 years was $70,000, so you would assume that over 10 years would be about $140,000. You can see $2.5 million is about $300,000, so if you kind of divided that out, it's about $100,000, a little less than $100,000 per million.
Okay.
So, if you were to, if you were to want to finance our portion of that, it would make a significant difference on this analysis.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a quick question on, when we bond, do we pay that interest monthly? How do we, or the payments? How do we make bond payments? Do we make those monthly or are those annually?
We pay interest twice a year, and we pay a principal payment once a year, so.
Okay, because I was trying to figure out, we have, as of now, we have $630,000. Again, I'm gonna call it sitting in this bucket to service debt or to pay down the $2.5 million. We could borrow 2 million instead of 2.5 million, which would lower our amount of debt payment necessary. And I know that we get the transient guest tax paid.
Quarterly.
So, that's quarterly, and so that's not, it's probably like 75,000 or so. So, we're probably gonna have closer to 700,000 before we even bond for this, correct?
Well, we anticipate bonding for Bill Burke this year, in 2023, but that means our payment won't start until 2024.
Right.
So, we'll have an interest payment due in February of 2024, and then our bond payments are usually in October.
So, we could be closer to 900,000 as far as that.
Yeah.
Because we just February, you get it February, yeah.
You'd spend part of that in February to pay off the interest.
So, we'd have a pretty good chunk of either lowering the Bill Burke debt or, you know, funding part of this second request, I guess.
One of the things we talked about was shortening the term of the Bill Burke debt, so that we're ready to finance the next round of replacement.
Yeah, so we have, the good thing is, we have options, I guess, is what I'm saying, that we want to analyze.
We do have options on that. No, I'm not sure how, what the minimum of amount of debt term can be. Typically, ours are 10, 15, or 20 years, so I don't know, to go an eight-year or something like that. I don't know what that does to one, interest rates or anything like that, but we certainly have options, yes.
I have some other questions. I'll go ahead and let Bill.
I've been watching the South High project pretty close, thinking, man, I need to get that. Are they going to do an identical grandstand on the North Field?
No.
No.
No, it's, I guess, I guess the theory behind that is, if you're privileged to play on the varsity field, you get to play over there. You get to play on the other field if you're in the minor leagues, so. At least right now, there's no plans. And it's, I'll say it's cheap to do it, really. I mean, it's 100 grand. A lot of folks say that isn't cheap, but in the scheme of things, when you've spent 4.5 million over there, it's possible, and I won't be surprised a bit that they, if they do it. But right now, there's no plans that I know of, but it's very possible, because it just isn't that.
Right now, there'll just be bleachers set there like.
That's right.
Therefore, okay. I guess I'm gonna look to city staff on the cost, the condition of these fields, not really acceptable, playable. What would we be spending to get these playable in top-notch condition that could go toward these improvements?
Well, I understand the question, so there is, and Jeff, feel free to come up if you have more to add. There's no doubt deferred maintenance, and then we've been talking about that across the park system, so there's an expectation that we'd have to address some of that. I don't know that we've quantified the work or the cost. The thing that we've been focused on the most at the moment is getting that runoff off of the runway to stop, so that we can solidify the infield and some of the challenges we have there, and that is part of the 4 million project that we're undertaking. We have designers tasked with that, but we probably do need to inventory the odds and ends that are shown in those pictures, and regardless of whether it's a public-private partnership or not, I see that as a responsibility we need to fund. But your question was, what's the dollar value of that? And I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't have a quantification of what it would take to get it to a higher level at this point.
And I do think the Dean Evans lights, we were hopeful that that would be part of the first project and weren't, so that does remain as an ongoing item for, it's gonna be unavoidable at some point.
I guess my point is, we need to spend money somewhere, whether it go to get the fields up to speed or make the major improvement. So, and my other question is, the bids came in lower than expected for the Bill Burke turf, and from my memory, we were somewhat ready to go with turf up at Berkeley.
Well, we did an ad alternate to find the pricing.
Yeah, right.
At Berkeley at the request of Solano Baseball Enterprises, so I think they elected not to go forward at that time.
Yeah, because they wanted to go forward in a big way.
That's fair.
Yeah, so how much money do we have left from that?
Well, I guess my answer would be, we still have a scope of work yet to complete. As I mentioned, not just the drainage, but Jeff, do you want to kind of itemize what's left to be designed, bid, and constructed as part of our current project?
Great. The ad alternate was for the design and engineering relating to the requests from Solano Baseball Enterprises for Matson and possibly Wilbur. But the 4 million price tag for Bill Burke, we're getting ready to, we're nearing completion of the turf fields. What we have remaining to accomplish is fence, gate improvements, we have dugout improvements, backstop improvements to finish at Bill Burke as well. There's also an expense relating to the equipment that we need to maintain the turf. You'll see that forthcoming here in the next few weeks for requests for purchase, so we have, and then, of course, the drainage solution at Berkeley Family Recreation Area.
And then bathrooms?
And bathroom projects, so we have the CXTs coming, CXT bathrooms that are arriving on Wednesday of this week, and those are being, that was a purchase that we made from that 4 million dollars as well, and then the infrastructure that goes in to support those sewer water electricity for those as well, so.
I guess what I'm hearing, there's not gonna be a bunch of money left over.
We don't know at this point. I remain hopeful, but we did purchase a larger bathroom and was originally budgeted for the CXTs.
Correct.
I think we need to get through that design and bid process, and then we'll be able to answer that more specifically.
Well, I like the, I like the scope of this, and it would, it would put, really put Solano on the baseball map, the circuit, so.
It's definitely long overdue. I did have a question about Matson Field in the foreseeable future. Are there plans to ever turf that, assuming we get through this current phase?
You know, we have plans that we want two fully-turfed fields, and whether it would be Matson or Wilbur, and by the way, we went back and forth as to which one it should be as well. Wilbur went out because it's just so close to Dean Evans, it just makes all sorts of, it's more money, 3/4 of a million dollars approximately more, because they don't have lights, there's no scoreboard, a lot of amenities that don't exist that already are at Matson. But we decided, five years from now, are we gonna wish we had raised more money and did it right? And our group said, yeah, let's just, let's do this. Is there, we don't have necessarily any plans to turf Matson. If we get, if Byron Thomas does as good a job as he did last time, we will come back to you and say, "Let's do something." Solano Baseball's been around for, obviously, 40-plus years. If everybody wants that to be turf, we're liable to be right in the mix with you and help you out with that as well, meaning Matson Field at some point. And maybe what you do is you just turf the infield at Matson or something like that. For reference, it's about a $450,000 cost if you just do an infield on a baseball field. So, it's, the outfield's.
I want to discuss our issue with Matson's infield, though, if we turf the waterline?
Oh, yeah, that's.
Not a big deal.
Entirely different issue, but it's an easy fix. Leave it in place or spend $150,000 and rerate it. So, it's, it's not something that I would stop anything at Matson, but it is an issue that you'd have to address, because there's a 20-inch water main running right underneath Matson Field. Just so you have an idea of scale, an outfield on either a softball, the ratios are about the same. The outfield is about 2.5 times the size of the infield. So, one of the reasons that you can do a lot of infields at Bill Burke, you could only do two fields at Bill Burke. If you did them all, you can do eight infields, because, boy, it is a pasture, the outfield. You just don't realize until you do the numbers just how big the outfield's are. You can put 2.5 infields in an outfield, so it adds up pretty darn quick. I want to encourage something, or agree with something Debbie said earlier. The number that you guys are using, replacement cost, is 55%. That number might have come from me. I think when Deb and I talked, I said it was 55. The range is 45 to 55, so using 55 is the right number, and then you can be pleasantly surprised if it's 50 or closer to 45. It depends on a lot of, each field is different, and it depends a lot on the amenities that you had to do to the field to get it playable, and you won't have to change those amenities when you do the re-turfing. So, it's somewhere between 45 and 55, and I think you're right, using 55, so that you won't be shocked in the wrong direction if it comes in at 55.
Well, Kenny and I can remember playing on the ball diamonds at the fairgrounds, and they were not good. Then we had diamonds at Shilling, and they were.
They were even worse.
Huh?
They were even worse.
And these might be catching up with them. I have walked the facility, and I can tell you, this is an embarrassment. I can't believe we've allowed these facilities to get this way. And we talk about, you know, we don't want to put burden on the taxpayer and so on and so forth, but something should have been done with these a long time ago. I mean, if you look at the aerials, and if you walk, if you walk out to the, whether it's the batting cages or the pitching, it just, it looks bad. Mine is, if we don't do something like this, I'd suggest we just tear them down. That would almost be about as good, because they're that bad. The infield and outfield at both Matson and Wilbur are, I wouldn't want my kids playing on them. They're that bad a shape. I'm not even sure home plate faces the pitcher's mound correctly at Wilbur when I stood at it, so. Again, I know we, there's individuals that believe we're spending too much money on some of this. I think we need to, again, continue to think about if we're gonna continue to bring, keep young families in our community. We need to have facilities that we can be proud of. I would suggest that staff continue to work with Solano Baseball and see if we can move this project forward. I think our transient guest tax is doing what we wanted it to, and I think it, you know, with some of the things we have going on, I believe that, that transient guest tax. I know room rates are going up, and when room rates go up, transient guest tax goes up, so I see those, I see actually those numbers increasing for us in the future, so.
Mayor, I'll agree with you. I think we should move forward. This public-private partnership is probably the original one, and they've been very successful with what they do, and they're pretty competent project overseers as well, so about confidence in their vision, there's the multiplier effect that it brings to the community, and it really just is time to do something with these fields. It discourages me. I wouldn't want my kids playing out there either, because I think they, you should have adequate facilities.
And I think people coming in from out of town, it gives us a black eye, too. It shows that we have not taken care of our facilities. Quick question, we talked about design-build on this. Did we do design-build the same, how did we do Dean Evans? How was that handled?
Dean Evans wasn't truly designed-build, but that's a great question. There's two delivery methods generally, design-build or what's more traditionally, which is what normal buildings are built out of, which is called design-bid-build. And you guys are all, an engineer, an architect, design something, send it out for bid, and then it gets constructed. That's design-bid-build. Design-build is where you give the, you give the bidders enough information to actually do the design and build it with oversight by the owner. And in the case of you guys, you would be the owner, and that means you gotta have a strong, really strong project manager. And success and failure of any project, it really is about project management, from the contractor, from your consultant, and from the city. And it's, I can't emphasize enough, if you have a bad project management, your project, chances of success could really go down. But what we did, we provided a RFP that was very, very all-encompassing, and we told them exactly how the facility had to perform, meaning we required that they be able to drain at 40 inches per hour, and it needs to be able to withhold this much water, so there's only discharges at a certain rate, fences will be this long, and on and on and on. And we, very exacting turf requirements. And the reason we did that is twofold. Number one, we save engineering costs by not having to do super-detailed engineering drawings, but forcing that on the contractor with us having supervision or final say over their design. So, now, we managed to get ourselves and you guys out of the liability omelet, because we put all of that onus on the contractor, the successful turf contractor. So, if something goes south, no, there's not gonna be finger-pointing at Dean Evans or South High, it's all on the turf contractor. So, that's the reason we took that route, and we saved ourselves probably a quarter of a million dollars, and that quarter of a million dollars went right back into the facilities. We would use the exact same process.
That's what I was wanting to.
Exactly the same process.
Because I thought we had done something to save some of that.
We did, yeah. All the money went, and nobody from Solano Baseball received any money. As a matter of fact, we donated, so it costs us money to build the fields. We didn't get paid anything.
Well, and I guess, to take one step further, and I guess we have a few minutes here. I like the idea of the Wilbur Field being done prior to the Matson, one, because of the waterline, two, because of the proximity to Dean Evans. Two, you talked about the umpire-changing room, it's within walking distance, obviously, of.
That was one of our considerations.
Of the Wilbur. You're kind of doubling up on using the same facilities there. You're, you're kind of doubling up on using the same facilities there, so.
You know, I do want to add one thing. They do have a, they, meaning you all, have a water problem with the old runway, and Wilbur Field, Dean Evans solved the start of the water problem. Because as you guys know, those turf fields, they don't run off, they go down and out. Well, Wilbur would do the same thing. So we would be lessening your ultimate problem with water runoff because now we're going to build a field that doesn't run it off, but that absorbs it, and probably can even absorb some of the rainwater that's landing on the runway. So we would be actually helping your, your current system, your, your current water problem up on the airport.
I think one good thing moving forward with this, I hear about the demand and the traffic on Dean Evans, that it would take some of that load off.
Yeah, it's, it's busy, some days seven days a week, and some days, seven days a week, twice a day, mornings and evenings. And it's, it's an incredibly busy field. By the way, if you walk out on the field, I have a relationship with the turf contractor, and, and they came and replaced our pitcher's mound and batter's box, and those are ongoing, they're going to need regular replacements. They said the field, this is our third season, at South and at Dean Evans, looks as good as any field that they have ever built in their life after three years of use. So that's a compliment to the people that are maintaining these fields. So may you get a few more years? Maybe. I think you should use 10, like Debbie's been doing. I think that's the right approach. You might get 12, and then you're in better shape financially.
Who did, who did those fields?
ATG Sports out of Andover. They're the closest thing to local, and they were the little bidder.
Right.
So it all worked out great for us. One other, I want to respond to something you said, Bill. We had, we have some tournaments that we hold up at Dean Evans and always have for years. And one of the tournaments that we have, not the Grand Slam, but another one, we had some teams back out this year. We probably hurt ourselves in a way because they loved Dean Evans so much, but the second field isn't just a little worse, it's so bad that they said, you know, as great as Dean Evans is, these secondary fields are so bad, we're going to go someplace else this year. So you're right, we're already losing people that want to participate in spite of the fact we have Dean Evans. Yeah.
Okay, Larry, you want to talk on behalf of Salina Baseball Enterprises?
Larry Brittigam, 102 South Skyline Drive, Mayor Hoppick and Commissioners. I did, I did want to talk for just a second about baseball, but I, I wanted to emphasize another point. As a lifelong resident here, I grew up playing baseball here, and I coached for 30 years, and have been involved in baseball my whole life. Baseball's changed. We used to play 10 games a year, you'd be done, and that's what you did. It's not like that anymore. Teams are playing 50, 60, 70 games a year, whether we agree or disagree with that philosophy. They're traveling all over the place, and they're looking for tournaments, and they're willing to spend a lot of money in those communities that they go to. So I'm going to talk just briefly from a Salina 2020 perspective. And some of you were, some of you weren't on the commission when, eight years ago, the city took a chance on a group of people that said, we think we can improve downtown, and if we do that, we think we can improve our economy in our community, because we knew we had to do our own thing. We couldn't depend on anybody else to do it for us, any government entity. We had to get private people, private investors to put money in downtown, and the last numbers that Debbie sent to Salina 2020 looked pretty good from the sales tax revenue and continuing to grow. And I think that says a lot about when you take those risks and you put money in an engine that helps generate economic development for your, for your community, you can see what happens. It's not just about downtown Salina, it's about South Salina too. There's hotels there, there's restaurants there. If the economic development number is $2.8 million, if we get this done with what you're doing with Bill Burke, it could be twice that. And once again, people coming to our community, they fall in love with Salina, they, they move here, their kids like Salina. Long-term, we have to do it ourselves because nobody's going to do it for us. And if we want to continue to grow, I think, I think we have proven in the past that those types of initiatives, including this baseball project, are what's going to help us continue to bring money into this community, and ultimately that helps everybody. So thank you for the opportunity to say something.
And, and one of the things we do have later on in our, on our agenda is we are going to discuss under 6.1, the turf maintenance replacement fund, and I think we need to discuss that, and there's some, some issues that maybe we need to, to send back to the, there's an oversight board, whether it's using steel cleats or, or some other things that have happened at the stadium that I think we need to send back to the, to the board to, with comments, so. Okay, anything else? If not, we have five minutes, and we'll start the regular meeting.
We're on air.
I'm ready. Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call to order the March 27th Salina City Commission meeting. For, I will look to, I'm going to let people settle down in the back there. I will ask staff for confirmation that Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will all those that are able please stand for pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards or proclamations today. That will lead us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 4.1, continuation of public hearing and providing direction regarding a tennis complex naming rights agreement and agreement related to funding and construction of tennis building renovations.
Okay, Mr. Scrag.
Picking up where we left off two weeks ago, Commissioners. As I'm sure you recall, we had a proposal before, well, I guess we should call the public hearing to order.
I think it's, we left the public hearing open, correct? Do we just need to call it to order?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, call the public meeting to order then.
All right, thank you. So as you recall, you considered this item two weeks ago, and there was a public hearing as it relates to the naming rights aspect of the, of the proposal and request. Staff provided you a, a draft outline of an agreement that would take into account the intentions of Salina Tennis Alliance and their proposal and the, the naming rights proposal. I think, and not to minimize other aspects of that, that proposal and that outline, but I think the biggest talking point by far was the fact that there is a proposed naming rights sponsor, prepared to commit $50,000 a year for 10 years for a naming rights sponsorship. There's a desire on the part of Salina Tennis Alliance to make improvements to what was the former bath house of, of the old municipal pool, to turn it into at least phase one improvements, to turn it into office space and a tournament center, bathrooms available for users of the tennis complex. And that, that expense exceeds available funds, especially if you needed to borrow and be prepared to pay, use that $50,000 a year to make a loan payment. The net present value of that loan is less than $50,000 over 10 years. So one of the outline elements that, that we called to your attention was whether the city wished to provide money upfront, using our borrowing, the, the cost of our borrowing to determine the net present value, and then be paid back over time. And that is certainly, it could represent a financial risk, it certainly represents a precedent, something that we've not done before. And I know you deliberated on, on that in particular, chose to postpone consideration to, I think, give yourselves some time to consider it and, and give Salina Tennis Alliance an opportunity to consider options. As I think I've reported to you previously, we have a standing meeting with staff and representatives of Salina Tennis Alliance on a weekly basis, depending on the availability of schedules. So with spring break in there, we didn't meet immediately following your last meeting, but we did meet last week, had some conversation. The conclusion of that was that Salina Tennis Alliance was going to have a board meeting Thursday of last week, wanted the opportunity to discuss that further and would provide some feedback after the board meeting, which I cut and pasted as a direct quote into the staff report at the top of page two. And so just for everyone's benefit, they responded that STA has a $500,000 gift from donor that was initially targeted to go to operations and maintenance programming and had to be altered to comply with city naming rights policy towards brick and mortar, and thus donation had to be realigned to go towards the building improvements. Our solution was presented to the city. The city will need to determine direction they want to go with that. Based on the city's decision, we can determine next steps. There's certainly other elements of the outline that I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have as relates to everything from the phasing to our cash contribution based on realized savings and anticipated costs related to roof repairs. And don't want to belabor those points, be happy to answer the, any questions that you might have. In the fiscal note, we did try to provide you kind of a mathematical accounting for the estimated cost of phase one at $810,000, the various savings that were realized, the approximate roof repair cost, and then the naming rights advancement by the city valued at $430,000. That still left $205,000 in that, that scenario, with $100,000 available from STA. And so depending on kind of the nature of how we want to proceed, that determines what funding might, additional funding might need to be raised by Salina Tennis Alliance. I guess I would offer to you that we've calculated the net present value of that $50,000 income stream is in the $400,000 range. I don't know that STA has done a, a detailed calculation, but I think in our conversations, that was possibly $300,000 accounting for their borrowing cost. If that were the case, then that represents an additional $100,000 STA would have to, to raise to close that gap. They've also applied for a grant through the state of Kansas, is tourism related, too soon to tell. And I think the intention there was to try to give funding to, to the entire project, not just phase one, but it's too soon to tell what, what the prospects might be with respect to that grant. So with that, we're kind of back to picking up where you left off, with a little bit of additional conversation in between, and the feedback from STA that I, that I detailed for you. I'd be happy to answer, try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we've had two weeks, I think. I'll start to my left, see if we have any new thoughts or questions or comments.
We discussed the bonding scenario, but did we put an opportunity cost and amount on what it would cost us to just finance this internally? Like, we park an awful majority of our idle funds, and it's pretty short term, so to me, that's just a percent and a half or two. If we finance this internally, how much of an impact?
Yeah, staff started-
I think we have confidence in the, all the payments being made.
Staff started with that calculation, looking at what rate of return we receive on our investments, and we kind of ended up at the same number. We're in that 4, 430 range. Now, I think we assumed 3.4% return on our investments and ran scenarios all the way up to six to seven percent, which draws that balance down to somewhere around $300,000. But whether you look at the borrowing cost, or whether you look at our lost opportunity cost, we kind of ended up at, at the same general value.
My question probably isn't directly for you, but just wanted to make sure I have some assumptions correct. Right now, there's $175,000 that the city was planning on.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry to be distracted, just looking to see if we have representatives of STA either online or in the audience. I'm sorry, I didn't see you, clerk. I was looking for Liz. Sorry.
The city had planned to spend $175,000 more dollars, just looking at these numbers on page two here. Savings from the demolition of the pool, de- on page two here. The savings from the demolition of the pool, deferred bathroom expense and the roof expense. If you add those three together, that's $175,000 that we had.
Correct.
Already planned to spend. We haven't spent it, but you know, we planned to spend that.
Correct.
And you take that from $810,000, that leaves $635,000. Salina Tennis has $100,000 now, so there's a gap of $535,000 between either naming rights and additional funds. So the question, I guess for me is, how do you maximize the naming rights? And just see, having to lose $100,000 of it to pay it out over a long time, you know, that money would basically finish closing the gap. I guess the question I have for Salina Tennis is, when the donor was asked to, use the term, realign the donation from operations into brick and mortar, was there a discussion on changing the schedule for payments in that typically you want to, you don't want to build at $50,000 a year. You want to build it all at once. And now you may pay for it longer, but has that discussion occurred? I mean, to the extent that you can discuss it?
Yes, Clark Renfro, STA. So your question, Commissioner, was when that, those funds were realigned going from operations to the bricks and mortar, did we consider where other operational money would come from?
No, I mean, I could ask the question in a more blunt fashion. When realized that money would have to be used for construction, was there any attempt to get the whole amount upfront, which is what it boils down to?
From donations?
Well, from that particular donor.
I think those discussions were had, but the plan was over 10 years. I think that was, I mean, that was.
Well, and that would have worked for operations because.
But for building, the same thing applies. I mean, it's a donation that was allocated to STA and in the terms of its intent was, you know, over a 10-year period. And so when that realignment was discussed, there really wasn't any plan from the donor to make that a one-time, one-time donation upfront, I guess would be the answer to that question.
All right. So in the city advancing that money, if that was not an option, what would have been the plan B for getting the construction underway?
Well, I think that, I think plan B would be to have the city go ahead and make their 175, whatever that commitment was to make the building, you know, and make the bathrooms available. And then from there, seek donations to fill in the gap. We've got, again, to the commission agreement, we've got naming rights available, we've got one court, and we've got one hitting wall available. And we have had discussions with donors for those. So we have opportunities to raise additional funds in addition to, even addition to that. We've got the building. So that would be certainly something that we'd have to spearhead. And then another option is certainly we've got grants out there that, you know, we can't have no control over. They may or may not happen, but we're in the process of seeking other opportunities for those funds.
So the construction would be held up until?
Yeah, there would be a delay. Yeah.
Okay. That's my only question for right now. Yeah.
I don't think my position has changed any in that. I would like to see the facility get up and running and stabilized and performing. And I am curious about this grant funding. I don't think there's a reason to hurry into this. If there's grant funding available, I would like to know a little more about that. I, I'm still not comfortable with the city acting as a bank.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Well, originally, my position, like everything sports, I'm all for it. I don't think there's any argument that we all want to see the project completed. That being said, I've received a lot of feedback from the public in the last couple of weeks. Basically, there are some feelings about the city being the bank. And it's unprecedented and, you know, maybe it's not a trend we want to start based on the feedback I'm hearing.
Yeah, from what we just heard from Salina Baseball, they got great plans. And I think if we do this for tennis, we'd better be doing it for baseball. So.
And I, I see that, I think Sylvia left. I know, I think they applied, was it the Sprint grant you applied for? And I don't, are those being, is that April or May that those were awarded?
Mr. Mayor, the deadline was, for the applications were bumped up two weeks from the end of February to middle of March. And so it's my understanding that that decision is made sometime in April. And then there's a period of time that those funds have to be used. Certainly, our progress and where we are with the plans and the designs certainly are ready to be kicked off relatively quickly. So that's certainly something that we have, you know, to our advantage. But to answer your question, I believe it's, there's an April timeframe when those are going to be allocated. I also will note, you know, part of this request is, as we came from our board meeting last week, is, you know, what the city's decision is to do with that. We've got $500,000 that are earmarked for this. And it initially was, as part of the naming rights was, we were indicated that for those naming rights would not work unless they went to bricks and mortar. Now, we're in a position that we've got to say, all right, city, what do we want to do? You know, we've got a gift here that can certainly make substantial impact on this facility. Now, how do we, how do we position that and how do we use that? It's not an ultimatum. It's not a, it's just, it's a, it's certainly a position that we were in, that we came with a solution. And that's where that came with an opportunity for the city to assist us since that funds were not able to be used in the way that we initially had requested.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would like to see if the Sprint grant is awarded. I know there was five different entities, I think, that from Salina that applied for that. And I can't remember how many millions of dollars that was that the state has. It was fairly significant. Don't, not sure how they're scoring those. I'm going to go back to my comments from two weeks ago. I'm concerned about setting a precedence. Every other time we've done naming rights, whether it was with the field house or with baseball or anything else, we've always had those dollars paid upfront. Again, as an ex-banker, anytime I was loaning money, I answered to a loan committee or I answered to a board of directors. And my board of directors now, I guess, would be the citizens of Salina. And much like Mr. Long, Commissioner Longbine said, I've had significant discussion about this, more than with anything else probably, about being the bank. And to, to a person, I've had everyone say, that's not the city's role. So I think with that, with what I'm hearing and with what my gut says, as so far as setting a precedence, I just can't see us moving forward and being the bank and taking those monies and having them paid over time to us. Now, if the donor can, gets a loan somewhere else, I know they were looking to us because they think we can get a better interest rate from us. I just don't think that's the business that we probably want to get into.
If I can ask just a question, I'm not sure who'd be able to answer it, but what is the difference in interest payment over a 10-year period, assuming, well, I have to assume, I know the group would be creditworthy, but a loan that that group could obtain on their own versus what the city would pay them as far as dollars over a 10-year period?
And I don't know what rate they were looking at, but if we just look at the chart we had from the estimated funding, at 3%, they would have netted 426.5. At 6%, they would net 368. So whatever that difference is, that's the difference in 3%.
Thirty-two, so that's.
Right.
Fifty.
Is that not correct?
That was going to be my answer. I'm not sure what interest rate they would be able to borrow at.
But I can only give examples of what we had on our sheet from two weeks ago. So.
So, not to put you on the spot, Clark, but do you know an interest rate, a borrowing cost for?
You can pull a chair up and just stay there.
Yeah, conventional bank financing, you're going to look at, you know, you've got a nonprofit that's the borrowing entity here. So you're looking at probably a half, a percent and a half to 2% below conventional bank financing, which would probably put you in, you know, with today's rates, around 6%, 6.5%. And again, you know, could talk banking all day about this, but there's a lot of things that go into this that are unique, certainly for the city and for a bank to do something like this, you know, from a conventional bank financing perspective. But that's, that would be in the ballpark.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the commission? We'll open it up to the public unless. Okay, are there any comments from the public?
Ben Wenholtz, Salina. Well said, Mayor Hoppick. The citizens are the board of directors in this instance. We are the people that pay the financing on the city. Back on September 12th of 2022, during a study session for the, with the tennis complex, one of the questions that was asked was how long the court surfaces would last. The answer was, with Kansas weather conditions and surfaces, would need to be redone at an estimated seven years at a cost of today's prices estimated at $5,000 a court, or $60,000 for all 12. By the time this needs to happen, we all know that that estimate will be much more, probably be about $6,000 a court or $72,000. So there's another means of funds that need to be collected by either STA or the city to be able to do this. And who's going to be on the hook for these? That's one of the questions I would like to know. That's in regards to the partnership. Two weeks ago, the director of STA stated that an estimated 825 people were on site in the first two weeks of operation. With that many participants, how much did the STA take in at $5 an hour for the six courts that weren't available to walk on public players? That should have been quite a bit of money. I'm with Commissioner Longbine to a certain extent. STA needs to prove themselves for at least two years with operations and bringing tournaments to town to add to the economical impact of Salina to justify that need for a million-dollar facility. So what needs to be done right now is have the city go ahead and replace the roof. That was not in the original partnership agreement. So we'll be on the hook for the cost of that. Then spend the $69,900 that's left for the serviceability of the restrooms. And that's what that money was for, to get the restrooms going in the facility. That way you can remove the porta-potties that are on site. If you're going to give them a loan based on naming rights, don't give them the naming rights and let them prove themselves. Let them prove themselves for the next two years that they can come through with these tournaments and everything. We heard from the baseball. Yeah, there's a lot of baseball tournaments that do come to this town. But you got to remember, baseball is much more popular than tennis, especially around this area. So let them prove themselves, basically, and just get the building going so they have something of a building. And whatever they can do with their money of $100,000 they have left over, then do that. And then come back in two years and see where we're at.
Thank you.
If I could, I just want to offer one clarification. Our cost estimate for the roof was just to repair it, not full replacement.
Norman Mammel, Salina. The reservation issue, the state of Kansas, the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, I attend these meetings. We're having issues with this reservation system. They've already had to change it. It's going to be first come, first served that day because this is public property. Everyone has the right, the equal opportunity to occupy this space this day. This has happened back in the 1800s about private property reservation. You can't do it. So I would suggest you talk to the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. I don't know when the next meeting is going to be. It'll be May before they have another meeting. So we can reserve this half, but not this half. Now, we're going to go back to 1964, the Civil Rights Act.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I want to clarify something. I think there's some misconception on the courts, on how those are used. I think there were some comments here. The courts are free. The courts are free to anybody that wants to use them. There is a reservation system. If you and I want to go reserve a court for Friday afternoon and we want to make sure the court's available, we have the opportunity to do that. If we choose to go play and hope there's a court, we can go and walk right in. The courts are free to the public. There's an element there that you can make reservations, and that's a courtesy to the public, so they can have a place to play. So drove by on the way over here. Every court is being used. Are, is everybody there paying, paying money? Don't know if they reserved a court or not. There's six courts that are purely for public use. There's six other courts for purely for public use. But they are able to reserve those courts if they choose. So just want to clarify that. I think sometimes there's, I mean, there's questions on how those courts are being used. That's the intent. That's what we've, we've set up and believe it works well. We don't have all the answers, and there may be things that we have to adjust along the way. But the courts are being used. And however you want to define, popular or whatever, that is, there's certainly a need for them, and we believe we've met that need. And we went out and we sought private money to help the city get there. And we feel there's that opportunity to, to do more and grow the game. So.
Can you give, give us a little synopsis of how it's going? You know, what have we been open a month now? We haven't had very good, we haven't had very good tennis weather, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at really spring, just happened last, last week officially. But we've had some weather. The courts are being used. We've already had one college tournament there. The lessons clinics that are gearing up for later this spring and summer are actively getting full. Liz is actually on the court right now, teaching and giving lessons. So I don't have, Commissioner, don't have an exact number for you, but anecdotally have been over there and the courts are being used. Now, can you walk over there during a certain time of day and maybe there's nobody over there? Sure. But you could go.
Are the players figuring everything out and?
I think we're getting there. I think there's still, it's a little wonky trying to, sometimes for people to go in there for the first time. And there's some things that, for the most part, I think it works the way it's intended to use, to be used. But I think there's always ways to improve that. And I think we're willing and able to look into that. You've got a fine line in between security and convenience. And you certainly want to be able to see, have a number of who's using the courts and how they're being used. So I think there's an element there that we can always look to see how we can improve that process. Because we want it to be simple. We want it to be easy. And we want it to be accessible. But we also, for the same token, want it to be secure so we don't run into the same problem we had before where we had to go and raise private money to fix something up.
Yeah, I think this subject's a little more complicated than some. We've kind of dealt with different things. We've dealt with the building of the court, which I think STA did a great job. I think that's a wonderful facility. It looks great. I think it's going to be a benefit to the community without a doubt. But, you know, now we're dealing with naming rights, which is. rights, which is dealing with the clubhouse, which is completely separate than what we did initially with approving the building of the courts. And then we also have the programming that's different than we've done. So we've got some stair steps in there that we're dealing with that we've got, we're gonna have, we've got some growing pains right now that we have to work through. But right now, we're dealing with the naming rights today. And so I'm guessing we'll deal with some of that other stuff as we move along. So, okay, thank you. Clark? Just come on up, give us your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Greta Lagerberg, and I'm a lifelong Salina resident. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me the opportunity to share some of my reflections about our new Salina Public Tennis Courts. I'm a lifetime Salina resident. I'm an avid tennis player and a fan, and I have been for 60-plus years. I love playing tennis. If I totaled all the hours that I've played at Salina Public Tennis Courts, whom you provided a court for me, you provided free lights, my friends came, we played late into the night. I sincerely want to take the opportunity to thank you for that. I had no idea the blessing that was till some of this all began, so. So I thank you for that. As a result of learning to play tennis, I played on the first ever Salina High School Women's Tennis Team. I won't give you the year, but you can figure that out. And have continued to play ever since. Also, in my high school and college summers, I worked for the Salina Parks and Recs Commission as the Director of Tennis, and we offered hours and hours of free lessons for any kids at the Oakdale Park Tennis Courts. So years later, it was encouraging for me to hear that Salina was going to reinvest in the public tennis courts in Salina and the building of a new public facility, a new public facility. Unfortunately, you need to be made aware, it does not appear to be what has occurred to me, anyway. In fact, I have great concerns about the lack of public access. Per definition, the term "public" is defined as of or concerning the people as a whole. And that's exactly the concern I want to point out to you today. Our public courts there are not equally accessible to all of our Salina residents, no matter what people think. I began to hear rumblings of kids who went over there to play and they couldn't get in to play tennis. So I went over to check it out for myself, and I found locked gates everywhere. There's no access for the public anywhere to play on Salina's new public tennis courts, of which we've put in money for that. There was a sign, of course, posted on a locked gate. It had a page-long list of instructions of how to get to a computer, how to sign up, where to join, how to get a code. And the next time that you want to play, you have to do that all over again, which to me doesn't sound very accessible to the public. I need to tell you, as a 30-plus-year educator in Salina, there's a lot of homes who don't have a computer, believe it or not. There's a lot of kids who don't have cell phones. So think about that. How are they supposed to access the tennis court if that's true? It's not accessible to all of the public that has been partially publicly funded. So I'm here today to advocate for those in our whole community for whom do not have access to our public courts. For example, vision with me, two kids, they ride their bikes over to play tennis at the public courts. They don't have resources to access the required means, you know, to get a code. And so two Salina kids who wanted to play tennis in Salina have essentially just been denied access to a public tennis court. After hundreds of thousands of public dollars, I'm not sure of the amount, I think it's, well, I'll just leave it at that, or contributed to this project. That's really frustrating to me. Well, let's see, they could go to the other Salina public courts, but there are none because we're getting rid of all of the others. And so I ask you, where are the real public courts in Salina? Courts that are not locked up, that are accessible to the general public? And don't we want to keep these kids doing something fun versus causing problems on our streets? Can anyone tell me where those are?
I do agree. We do have, Jerry Ivy, those are being redone, and those will be open to the public.
I think they're gonna be locked up like Central High School and the South High School, from what I understand.
Uh, we did a deed, anyway, get into, long story, that we made sure that there were certain courts to be available to the public at all times.
Right, but if you're on a bike, it's a big city. And again, we're this kind of a north end, we're avoiding, ignoring access.
And I appreciate your comments on the access with the lock, because I think that's something we do need to look into. Because like myself, if my grandkids went over there, they wouldn't know what they had to do. So I guess that's something we'll talk to STA about.
You and I who followed all the news about it knew nothing about this, get a code before you can play.
I think that's a good point that I wasn't aware of.
I'm okay if the club part wants to lock up their courts, but I think public access should be open, accessible to all.
Okay, thank you. I'm guessing you made a note of that.
Yes. And as we've discussed, Commissioners, there's some elements of the operational agreement that STA has authority. There's a process to renew and discuss those terms. And I think everyone has collectively said there are some growing pains here, but then there are also the provisions, the operational agreement. So if that's something that you want to take up, as you mentioned, Mayor, we've got multiple things going on. This particular item relates to the naming rights. But if there are operational concerns, those are things we can note and take up as we renew the operational agreement.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission. And I know that STA has asked us to determine a direction they want us, want to go, and they can go from there. So I need to know if we have a motion. Do we have, where would we like to go as a group?
And if I could, the outline that was attached to the original report is a good basis for staff. On the assumption that you provide us either authorization to proceed as drafted or in some amended form, I think we then can continue conversations towards a final draft for your consideration. So I say all that just because any guidance you have about any of the provisions, that outline would be helpful. I know our focus has been on that loan aspect, but if there's anything else, we need to know that as well.
I was gonna make a suggestion. It's actually none of these, it would be a lot of adjustments to the point that just soon start fresh, but...
That's certainly within the governing body's purview.
Considering some of the Commissioners are interested in the granting aspects that have been discussed, is just a postponement the most appropriate thing for them to continue this discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead. If they get the grant money, obviously, depending, I don't know what they applied for, they may be able to finish the clubhouse without any additional funds. I don't, I don't know what that was. Whether they get the grant money or not, as far as the naming rights, I'm not for the city loaning the money upfront. And so I don't know how, I didn't see that in a, in a motion. The closest thing is to provide alternate directions as we deem appropriate, so.
And may I, Mayor, am I hearing from my fellow Commissioners that internal financing would be out of the question for the majority, or is it just the case where we're bonding?
No, it's bonding, I don't think, to me, it doesn't make any difference whether you're bonding or we're doing it out of cash. You're still, you're still loaning it up, you know, you're being the bank.
Yeah, I would, for one, I'd be comfortable with that, considering the distance this project has come. And I think future commissions, the bonding is one aspect, but promising this with internal financing doesn't set a precedent to me. But that's just my opinion. We've gotten so far down the road here, we ought to, we ought to push this to its conclusion. It's certainly, we own the building, and it's certainly a program that we want to see move forward. It's good for the city. If there are operational concerns about the availability, I think those things will work themselves out. But I'd like to see it move along in some form.
If I could dovetail on that, I think it is far enough down the road. I agree. We need to see it to its completion. I don't know if giving STA two years to prove themselves to get tournaments in without that building is gonna be a fair trial. Baseball has a tradition here. You know, they're not starting from ground zero. STA is starting from basically zero as far as bringing in new tournaments. I don't think the city should set the precedent of basically being a bank for an unsecured loan. But what I would suggest would be to see how much of a loan STA can get on its own, knowing it has $50,000 a year to pay back on that loan. And I would rather, you know, there's gonna be about a $100,000 shortfall, from what I'm hearing. I'd rather the city just grant that 100,000. It's not a loan, it's a gift. You know, put our name on the hitting wall if you feel guilty about taking money from us. But just give the 100,000, close the gap, and then the construction can proceed. But the onus on paying back that loan is on STA, not the city. So, you know, because the building, I mean, we're gonna put a roof on it, but it, it needs some work. I mean, you know, as a, if we were the landlord of a, if that was a house that we were gonna rent it out, we'd probably not feel too bad maybe putting in storm windows. I mean, doing something to help in that regard. But it's one-time gift and done. And then the grant could be used for phase two, if they get it.
So if I understood your description, that if you go to the outline in section 10, that would change the 175 to 275?
Correct.
And it would strike section 11 altogether?
Where's 11? I'm sorry.
It's at the bottom of the outline page. I mean, if you want to articulate that as a motion, those are the two amendments to the outline that I think would...
I can't find 11, but I'm taking, I mean, I know you know, you're stopping, taking your word for it.
Yeah.
Is this in the blue page? I mean, the white page?
Yeah.
Oh, in the white, oh, okay.
Yes, it's page one of the outline of the agreement, near the end of the entire item. Where would that money come from? Park master plan funds, sales tax receipts? I guess I could take a look at transient guest tax, what language we put in that transient guest tax rate as well. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, I would like to see the project happen. And I had said along, I'm for preserving the building. But I did expect STA to bring forth some other options. And we've not heard that today. So I guess I'm for continuing this discussion. And I'd like to see, you know, if this grant application is successful. That might change the whole, the whole focus.
Well, you know, as far as where the money comes from our transient guest tax account, you know, the reason I wanted intentionally not call it a baseball fund, but a sports facility fund. I hadn't foreseen this as an, as an example, but this is an instance where some of that money could actually be used for a sports facility. And this will qualify, I think, as a sports facility. It wouldn't put a huge dent in that cushion we're building up.
And I, and I think, and I think that's something we can discuss. I don't know if we're ready to discuss it today without staff doing some more analysis on that. I mean, I think today we're talking about the naming rights, and are we willing to go forward with the proposal that's before us? I mean, we've, we've, as a city, said we have 175 left. We'll put that 175 in. And then STA was to backfill that with, with their funds and then through the naming rights. So I guess today what we're discussing is the naming rights. And are we, how do we want to move forward with the naming rights? Am I off base? Well, the city staff, that's, to me, that's what we're discussing today.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm, I'm fine with the naming rights.
Yep.
You know, if you wanna...
We're fine with the naming rights, but their proposal is that we fund it. So that's the question.
If those two are inextricably tied together, it sounds like there's gonna be a problem. If the naming rights can be approved independent of when the money comes in and what it's used for, it just kind of sounds like the naming rights were never anyone's issue. It's the fact that they've been joined at the hip with the, with the financier.
You know, if the donor is okay with the naming rights and the contribution just going into a fund for later use?
Well, if it goes into a fund, you know, that puts the pressure back on STA to use, leverage that money to, well, I'm talking to bankers, I feel stupid doing this, but to see what you can get for it. And that's the reason I proposed us, you know, putting a little extra in. But it gets us out of the banking business and keeps us from setting a precedent.
I'm frankly comfortable with that solution, and I think the staff would massage that. I think they could figure out a way that we could fund the gap, whatever, in the numbers that I'm hearing here. If that protects the precedent, then...
But the gap is the 500 plus the 100 they still have to raise, or 100, yeah. So it's a $600,000 gap.
Well, they're gonna...
The naming rights, if they would get financing for the naming rights in a commercial market, then there's that and then the difference.
But I'm, I still think, they've offered to raise the other, I think we, I mean, I'm still for staying with the 175. And if they, if they can, if they can, if they can go out and raise the, however they want to do, but they have to bring the money to the table for the funding rights, or the naming rights.
Well, you know, our, if we made an additional 100,000 contribution, that check sits on his desk until they've shown that they've got the money. The 175 was to get the building closed. It was not to help renovate. The 100,000 is to actually go beyond what we were doing to make the building habitable, in very loose terms, if you've been inside. But to help towards making it functional as a clubhouse. But right, but we wouldn't release that 100,000 until, because STA would still have to decide if it wanted to go out and get the money on its, use that 50,000.
I guess that's my question. Would STA want to continue this discussion and take this back to your board, what you've heard today, and keep the conversation going?
I mean, we're willing to carry the conversation on. I think the point here is you've got a half million dollars that has been earmarked to this complex, whether that for naming rights, whether that goes into the initial intent, which was to go through, maybe used for programming, operations, maintenance, scholarships, those types of things to really make it a first-class facility? Or is it required to get those naming rights, which we altered to go into the building, to establish that? It isn't an ultimatum where that has to happen. The question is, what does the city want to do? And are they willing to save this 500,000, and we can apply it to that without going to the building and the city does their 175, and you have the naming rights? Or would the city be willing to do the, the bonding or the cash upfront to have those funds go into that building? And, and so that's essentially the way our understanding was, what's the city's decision? What do they, what do they want to do? Or is this, do we want to table this and have more conversation beyond today? So we've got, we, the community, STA, we have a half million dollars that's willing to go in to this facility. And, and from a naming rights perspective, is that gift that is really assisting taxpayer dollars that otherwise may be needed to go into that, is that acceptable from the city if it goes into programming, operations, maintenance, scholarships, to be, have naming rights? Or does that have to go to bricks and mortar? And if it does, then that's the ask to the city. Is the city willing to, to proceed with bonds and upfront cash to have that paid off? Or it's not, it really isn't one or the other, to have to have that to get, that's the question. And the city needs to, I guess, respond, and how, how do they want to proceed? And if there's more next steps or there's further discussion, then absolutely, we're willing to discuss. But the city's got to determine what they would want to do with that, those funds.
I may be misreading my colleagues, but I think we would, what I'm hearing is that we would not want to front them. We would rather you take that 50,000 a year pledge and see what that will front you. And then, you know, my proposal was to then be another, basically another fundraiser or donor on this list for phase one. We're already giving 175. I propose, you know, making it 275. But, you know, the onus on manipulating that 50,000 to get what you can out of it... But, you know, the onus on manipulating that 50,000 to get what you can out of it would be on your hands, not ours. So you'd, I mean, you'd still have the same amount of cash, it's just that the loan, so to speak, would not be with the city of Salina, it would be with X Y B Bank. With you as opposed to.
I think what he's trying to say is you would bring funds to the table right away, whether it's 500,000 or 400,000, which we've talked about being the net after interest if we loaned you the money. So whether whether we do bonding or whether we do cash, we as a city are still responsible for that debt, and that's the concern that I have, is whether it's debt finance or debt financing as a bond or we we put the money in as cash, either way, the public's responsible, and it's basically an unsecured loan, it's a precedence that we've not done, and and I just have a problem setting.
I mean, we could certainly continue if if that's if STA would wanna sit down outside of the spotlight and discuss options.
Yeah, ultimately, again, that's this is a decision that we rely on the city to make, and this is this is our our approach, and and so, you know, with that.
So I I think what I'm hearing from STA is they need us to say, yes, we're willing to front the money or we're not willing to front the money. And then I think their board will have to make a decision as to how they wanna proceed, knowing that we have at least 175,000 on the table and perhaps more as as Commissioner Davis said.
And Mayor, I would also add to that, I mean, again, two two sides of the equation is that that half million dollars initially was geared towards, again.
We wanna go into the building. We, I think we've we've said that, we've not, we've we've never taken naming rights to programming. I think we we kinda decided that we wanted to to go to brick and mortar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna reiterate that question in light of Clark describing it as he did. I think I think you've framed that as a question for the the city commission. I think all the feedback I've received from you is consistent with what you described, Mayor, but it might be good just to say, it sounds like STA has posed an additional question that I've not put to you, and that is, are you receptive to the funds from the naming rights being used to pay for operational expenses on a going-forward basis?
Not really.
And, yeah.
I'm just to shorten the conversation.
Okay, I'm not here, I'm not seeing receptivity to that. So then, yes, I think we're to the second question, which I think you as a group have articulated, that your preference is that it be monetized by Salina Tennis Alliance. And what I'm hearing is some discussion about an increased financial contribution, but I'm not sensing a consensus out of you as a group on that.
I'm not ready to make that at this point until we know about the grant funding and and what what gap they they still have to fill and so on and so forth.
I'm hoping that, I don't know how much you applied for, but I'm hoping it'd be nice if it's enough, was that the one that had the 500,000 minimum?
Yes.
So that would get you to phase two if you got the whole thing.
And part of that element is is still the commitment from the city for the 175, but the request that we could get where we need to go.
I think we've already stated we're good.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, you know, part of our request has that element built into it. So if we should be rewarded awarded that, then that would go in to get that completed to those phases that we discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I I don't think we have an option here that clearly gives us just a straight yes, up or down, but we may have to break this up into pieces.
And that was my question, do we wanna postpone this and come back and visit?
Well, or just change the wording on our options, or if there's a suggested, looking over to our city attorney, adjusted wording to answer the question, because the question we have to answer is yes or no on the proposal for the city funding the money.
I'm gonna look to legal counsel, because there's there's not a, there's not a anything on our sheet. Is it appropriate to make a motion thanking JRI for their their willingness to step forward, but the city is not willing at this time to either, how did, I can't remember how we had that worded now, bond or, I gotta look, that was on last week's sheet.
I believe the verb is monetize, which is a nice, nice word, I like that.
I got too many papers here, I had it earlier. And then that gives STA something to go back and and discuss.
To answer your question, Mayor, I think you certainly can. I'll look to the city manager in that I assume he will be the pivotal point of any further conversation, to be sure that that postures, whatever motion is made, postures the parties for further discussion.
Right, give enough direction to continue the conversation, and I think that would be fine. I do think then that kinda sends us back to have additional conversations. I think you go ahead and close the public hearing, and we may need to have a conversation about whether we're needing to re-notice an additional public hearing or how we proceed in that regard. Unless you, you know, postponing it once works, I don't know what timeframe to to tell you for the next postponement. If we drag this out too long, it feels like.
I I think we should close the public hearing, and then if we bring it back, it's a it's a new item. Because it'll have it'll have completely new.
Elements to it, yeah.
Elements to it and everything.
That may require additional, going back through that notice process, but we can do that.
Yeah, and that that would just be the seven-day requirement under the naming rights policy, so it's not too onerous, and I would certainly be more comfortable with closing and re-notifying based on what appears, how things are going.
Mayor, if I if I could ask Mr. Schrag, do we always seek compensation for a naming rights situation of this sort, or could the naming rights be given without the city being a party? I mean, we could allow the naming rights and just let the contribution go to Salina Tennis, and then restart the conversation about how the improvements on this building will go?
It, I guess, in the alternative, if you wanted to proceed with naming rights, my suggestion would be we we could enter into a naming rights agreement, the funds are contributed to the city, and they're held in escrow for a use to be agreed upon later, that does leave STA and and the the sponsor with less than a clear path forward, and it 'd be a question of their level of comfort. Rather than have, if it goes to STA, I think their their desire would be that it it fund program, uh, operational expenses. And what I heard from the consensus was he he wanted to go towards the building or the site. So I think we could, we could enter into a naming rights agreement where we agree that the funds are are contributed and leave open the use of those funds. I I can't speak for STA and and the naming rights sponsor, what their level of comfort would be in that.
I I think there's way too many open-ended questions to do that at this point.
Mayor, if I may, and again, I'll look to Mr. Schrag, but to be technical, we're on step four of the process, and what we're speaking of in terms of a final action granting the naming rights is step five that anticipates, I think, that those details have been resolved.
Right.
So for what that's worth.
So we need to close the public forum before we make a motion, I take it?
That would be fine.
So, okay, we've we will close the public forum, and I will bring it back to the commission for a motion. Does anybody wanna take a shot?
Did you happen to write yours down?
Okay.
I didn't think to write as you were talking or speaking.
I'm not sure this is gonna help, well, this is gonna sound, but I would make a motion, the city of Salina, thank JRI for their willingness for naming rights for the Salina tennis facility, but at this time would, how do I wanna put this? Not.
Decline?
Would decline to be the funding mechanism for the for the naming rights and the 500,000 donation.
If colleagues don't mind, you're making the motion, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to thank JRI for their willingness to participate in the naming rights, but decline to act as the funding mechanism for the naming rights. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes five zero, and we will allow staff to continue discussions moving forward on the, on the. Okay. We should've done this probably before we get the consent agenda. I will be recusing myself from item 6.5 and 7.2. We would like to move item 7.2 in front of 7.1 to keep them together. Do we need a motion to do that? I look to to legal counsel?
I think that would be best, Mayor.
Does somebody like to?
I move we switch the order of item 7.2 and 7.1 on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to switch the order of items 7.1 and 7.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much for doing that, guys. Okay, that will lead us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of March 20, 2023. Item 5.2, award the bid for project number 23004 Oakdale Avenue Bridge Painting to Southern Coatings of Tarpon Springs LLC in the amount of $119,995.95, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $125,995.75, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Southern Coatings of Tarpon Springs LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. And item 5.3, award the bid for project number 23016 2023 Mill and Inlay to APAC Kansas Shares Division of Salina in the amount of $1,016,494.40, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $1,66,851.87, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with APAC Kansas Shares Division of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Okay, is there an item that any of the commissioners would like to have pulled?
I'd like to remove 5.2.
Okay, we will remove 5.2. Do I have a motion to approve item 5.1 and 5.3?
Mayor, move approval of items 5.1 and 5.3 of the consent agenda.
We have a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes five zero. 5.2, Mr. Stack.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Questions on 5.2? Let me tell you what I know.
It's probably in here, but when was the last time that was painted, in 1992?
Oh, boy. Yeah, he did say it's 92.
92, okay.
Yeah.
With this this contractor vendor, do they guarantee their work? You know?
Well.
I I thought this was a lot of money to paint the railings and.
Well, it's just, it's got a two-year warranty, which is a typical warranty for any of our maintenance projects, it's kinda standard warranty. We've had a couple of bridges painted the last few years, so one of them would be Iron Avenue. If you've looked at that one, it's it was pretty rusty, and it's black paint now, and it's holding up pretty well. And we painted Walnut recently, that was a Mulberry, actually Mulberry, Mulberry, going going into the park. And so if you look at that one, that one was done a few years ago as well, seems to be holding up, so they typically last a lot longer than two years, that's the goal. But as far as how expensive that is, that's a good question. We were happy to get one, two, four, four bids, or five, five bids, all of which were within some reasonable amount, considering the bidding climate, so having them be fairly close.
Mm-hmm.
And normally, there's, if there is a better way to do it or some cheaper way, then somebody would propose that, but in this case, they did not.
I guess my other concern or question is, if the river dredging never gets underway.
Yeah.
You know, would it be better to wait till that's done or?
For the railings?
Yeah.
No, the river dredging would be done under the bridge, and you'd have to have, yeah, just it wouldn't affect the railings, it's, you know, these are just pedestrian railings typically. There's usually, a lot of our bridges have a corral rail for vehicles, that's usually concrete, but on top of that is some kind of, you know, ornamental railing for the, and then an ornamental railing to keep the pedestrians from having any safety concerns on the bridge. So, yeah, that's really wouldn't, I would not think it would impact any dredging operations.
I guess my other question is, is there a start and completion date on this?
There is. It's, um, don't know if we put it in here, but we do have that.
Yes, my concern was it running into the, like, River Festival weekend.
No, that's that's been a, luckily, most of my guys, my my staff have been around long enough to where there's a few, you know, holy grails of things you don't mess with, and that is the fair and the River Festival. So there, that is in all of our general conditions on all of our projects. I mean, that's like, that is one of the main things, so, yeah, no, we did.
Yeah, we did Kansas Wesleyan moving in and out.
Yeah, we've learned a few more over the years, you know, school starting, school ending, Kansas Wesleyan move-in day, let's see if I can, you know, name them all, but that that list has gotten longer over the years, but always the.
I don't need to ask that question again, huh?
Hopefully not. I mean, it's always in our general conditions, so it's, you know, we we do have contractors that don't read those very well or have to be reminded, but, yeah, that's, you cannot work on those days. Anyway, that's that is, that's, you can rest assured that that will not be affected.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move we award the bid for project number 23004 Oakdale Avenue Bridge Painting to Southern Coatings Tarpon Springs LLC in the amount of $119,995.95, with a $5,990.99 and 80 cent 5% contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $125,995.75, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Southern Coatings of Tarpon Springs LLC.
Okay, I'm gonna shorten that. We have a motion, a second, to approve consent agenda item 5.2. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes five zero. That will lead us to administration.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 23-11148 on first reading, establishing a turf maintenance and replacement fund, and authorize staff to make a $75,000 contribution to the fund in 2023.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. As part of the agreement entered into with Salina Athletic Partners in August of 2020, the city was agreed to establish a dedicated turf maintenance and replacement fund used solely for the use of maintaining, repairing, and replacing turf surfaces at Dean Evans Stadium at the ultimate discretion of the city, with the benefit of recommendations by the BFRA Advisory Board. Also in section 4.5.3 of the same agreement, an initial contribution of $50,000 was to be made by the city no later than December 31, 2021, with a matching contribution to be made by Salina Athletic Partners at the same time. And going forward from that date, a targeted contribution of $50,000 was anticipated, half of that coming from user fees or private donations, with a matching donation from the city not to exceed $25,000. The initial contributions due to staff oversight did not happen in 2021. We did, however, receive a contribution in December or in 2022 from the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce for $25,000, which triggered the matching of the $25,000 from the city. As we've been working through this process, we determined that we needed to do to establish the fund and then go get authorization to make these contributions to that funds as we have had committed in that agreement. So the fiscal notice that the $75,000 that the city would be obligated to make under the agreement. So the fiscal notice that the seventy-five thousand dollars that the city would be obligated to make under the agreement would come from either general fund or sales tax fund reserve balance. The obligation for the twenty twenty-three, uh, obligation would cut, would be determined later after we determine whether there are twenty-five thousand dollars in fees or twenty-five thousand dollar contribution had been made for twenty twenty-three. So going forward, that's the triggering mechanism for the city's matching funds of up to twenty-five thousand dollars. So are the action items for your consideration today would be to approve ordinance two, three, one, 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 four, eight, creating the turf maintenance and replacement fund and authorize the staff to make the seventy-five thousand dollar contribution to the fund in twenty twenty-three. You could approve the ordinance with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate, postpone consideration and give staff or to a specific time and date and provide staff with further direction for additional information that you deem necessary, or vote to deny the ordinance resulting in the city violating its agreement with Salina Athletic Partners. Staff would recommend option number two, and I would be open for any questions on the item.
Sorry, recommended number one or number two?
Oh, sorry, one, sorry. Number's in my head. Kind of crazy sometimes.
Inflation.
I was just seeing if you were paying attention.
Nope, looks good to me.
Question. Question that I, I had is, we're, we're putting this money into the turf maintenance and replacement fund. We've looked at our transient guest tax going in there that it appears we'll have sufficient funds to do turf replacement. What do we anticipate this balance being in this account when we get to that first turf replacement in the year twenty thirty-one or whatever?
Well, if we put our initial fifty thousand and then there's fifty thousand dollars put in every year until then, then that would be whatever the numbers I'd have to calculate. Don't trust me with numbers today. I can't even tell you what option it is.
That wasn't taken into consideration when we looked at the, the debt servicing and replacing the, the turf.
In, in part, this is dependent on setting fees to generate the revenue necessary to fund this. As we've looked at twenty-two, twenty twenty-two numbers, um, we had estimated expenses of forty, well, of twenty-two thousand and revenue of thirty, I don't know why my screen's not cooperating. Uh, about fifteen thousand more, so thirty-seven thousand. So we've yet to get fee revenue to spin off enough revenue to fund it like the agreement, uh, goal was set.
So you're talking about just maintenance and what would that maintenance entail?
Boy, I don't know why my screen, it's, uh, labor for maintaining the facility, materials.
Could be equipment.
So it is field maintenance, labor, and benefits, uh, field maintenance materials, additional expenses related to field maintenance and programming expenses. So those totaled twenty-two thousand. As I talked with staff, I expressed concern about, um, whether we're anticipating irregular expenses that are forthcoming or whether we're just, uh, understating it with recurring expenses.
So who reviews the fees and the hourly rates and all that? And how, and how, how often will that be adjusted if necessary?
By way of the agreement, there is an operations and maintenance advisory, advisory board made up of a representative of baseball enterprises, the school district, Kansas Wesleyan, a representative of the city manager's office, the park and recreation department, and the park and recreation advisory board. And then they are to nominate a baseball-at-large and softball-at-large representative. That group, uh, is meet and is supposed to meet on a regular basis and discuss these numbers and the current and, and proposed fees. And so the reason I have that, those numbers for you is staff recently conducted their own analysis of reservations and rental revenue compared to expenses. Our estimation to set fees at a, at a rate that would fund that agreement would take a, about a thirty-six percent rate increase over what they are today.
Dollar-wise would be not significant.
Right, it would take it from thirty-seven thousand to fifty thousand. And then there's tiered fee structures. There's a hundred percent rate, uh, baseball enterprises is at a fifty percent rate, the school district's at a fifty percent rate, Kansas Wesleyan's at a seventy-five percent rate, and this takes into account all of that. But that group needs to meet, discuss that, make a recommendation. I don't, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I don't know that we've had recommendations for fee increases come out of that group.
We had talked at one, we had talked at one time about some kind of monitoring system to monitor the actual usage of that and the time. I have concerns that it's loosely monitored.
The most reliable approach would probably be a pin pad system similar to what has gone in at the tennis complex, noting that it's a little bit different. You don't expect walk-on free play on Dean Evans. But I think that estimated cost between getting power to it and the system itself is approaching ten thousand. So, and, and that's part of the reason it hasn't been initiated.
And I understand that Kansas Wesleyan is replacing pitchers' mounds.
Yeah, I actually would like, I, I don't want to misspeak. Can someone from Park speak to that?
Travis Shaly, uh, Recreation Superintendent. Yes, we do meet quarterly, um, so our last meeting was in January, I believe, um, and we will meet here in May. So, um, to, to speak to the replacement, um, Kansas Wesleyan, um, due to a, uh, we do have a waiver for metal cleats, and they have taken the initiative of paying that replacement for the pitching mound as a part of them being waived for metal cleats for conference games.
That's above and beyond the rental fee.
That is correct.
And, and this doesn't deal with turf, but I noticed there's some fence damage out there. It appears some weighted baseballs have been thrown against fences. How is that gonna be addressed? Cause I noticed some broken brackets and stuff.
That came to my attention. I did meet with, uh, Coach Neil out there to view the practice. Uh, I wasn't too familiar with it. I actually had some other players show me what they were doing, and it, it is causing some, um, bend, I guess, you are, in, in the, uh, the fence. And so there is a bracket that we've tightened up. There's, those posts are mounted to the, uh, concrete. There was some wobbling in there. We do experience some of that due to wind, but there's definitely this.
Wasn't wind damage. This was weighted ball damage.
And, yes, and then so the, so the weighted ball has definitely caused some, some looseness in there. The wind will just tap onto that, of course. So I met with staff, I met with coaches to find a, a solution, and we actually reached out to Nima Hall.
Solution, don't throw weighted balls into a fence. I coached for fourteen years, never allowed them to hit, throw into a fence. That's why you have special equipment. That's a brand-new facility. Those fences should not have weighted balls thrown into them. So I'm just, you know, again, we're, we're talking, we're talking about replacing turf, but I don't want to have to talk about replacing fence in a year or two also because we've, we've not taken care of the facility.
I don't want to drag this on, but just, what is a weighted ball?
Weighs more than a regular ball.
And just throw it into the.
His way, call it what, yeah. It's a training, it's a training instrument, yeah. So.
Brand-new to me. I'm trying.
So, yeah, so, okay.
I guess I'm a little, uh, shocked that, about the steel cleats. Wesleyan has rights to wear steel cleats on the field?
There's no metal cleats, but there is an exemption this advisory board came up with, and you must file for it. And, uh, they have filed for it the last two years for games only for, um, to allow metal cleats on the facility. And as a part of replacing the pitching mound, that was approved.
Doesn't the metal cleats tear everything else up too?
They, they can, they cause more damage than a molded cleat, that is correct.
Cleats are just for the pitcher or for the whole team?
The whole team.
And I think it's, it's visiting teams that are allowed to wear metal. And I think that's, yeah, again, I don't sit on that board. I think that's something that should be addressed, um, you know, because it does, it does put more wear on your facility, so that's.
Yeah, I just didn't think you wore metal cleats on turf ever.
Yeah, and I think that's just to keep other schools that maybe don't have turf, but, uh, most of them do anymore.
Well, everyone's got turf now.
Yeah, so.
Because usually in most sports, you change your cleats based on the field you're on. Now, in that pitch, I don't know whether pitcher needs a metal cleat by me if it's tearing up the field, you know, and exemption doesn't pay for that piece of the turf to be replaced early.
That's why Wesleyan's been paying for some of that because of the, so, but I do worry about the, the wear and tear on the entire field with opposing teams wearing metal cleats, but that's something, I guess, for the, the, that, that maintenance group or whatever, whatever you call them to address.
They serve in advisory capacity. I think this conversation will certainly prompt additional conversation at that level, but, um, they don't necessarily have the final authority. If that's a big enough concern or a, a cause of damage, we can, we can step in.
Yeah, so.
But probably that's some standard that goes with the conference that they play in and, and so.
Well, I know that's been quite a bit of conversation amongst that committee, and I think Travis is able to speak to that better than I am, but I, I know that has been an ongoing conversation for quite some time.
So not, not to change the subject, but have we had this conversation about what's gonna happen at Bill Burke?
Yes, I've already ordered signs to state as such.
Okay.
So, um, I get, we do have the head coach for Kansas Wesleyan here to speak to that if that's something you want to do.
He's here, we're here.
We're open, we'll open it to public if anybody wants to make any comments.
Uh, Bill Neal had baseball coach. Um, I know it's to the weighted ball thing. We've bought special mats for that or whatever. I don't think we're the ones causing the beveling in the fence. I've seen high school teams in the summer doing that. Like I said, you don't throw a ball against a chain link. Now, some of the rattling of the, the brackets may be because of that, but we can address that and we'll, we'll help that. But the problem is, I don't think it's us. I think it's, you know, Kenny made a comment about, um, ATG saying how well the, the field is over this time. I think it's because of us. We've gone out there, we do workdays. I think we take care of the turf. Travis will even attest to this, probably better than anyone, which we do use it more than anybody. So, um, but, uh, the, the metal turf, or the metal spike thing, we wear all molds. So our entire team does. It's kind of a topic over everywhere right now and, and different places. I'm, it is, it is an advantage if we didn't allow the other team to do it, which, I mean, it's one of those things. Like I said, we pay extra money. We did a complete replacement where we paid for all of it ourselves last year or the first time around, I believe. So, but I am open to any questions. Like I said, I just, I don't, you know, I think we do as good of any, anybody out there. We take out our own trash in the, in the dugouts. We do, we do all that stuff. We pick up leaves. We, we, we treat that place like it's our own, even though obviously it's not, but, but we are out there more than, more than others and, but we take a lot of pride in that place and we're, we, we know we're blessed to have it.
Are certain parts of the field being torn up more because of the cleats? I'm assuming.
The only spot to me the metal cleats affect is the mound and home plate or whatever. If you're just standing at shortstop and you're just, you know, you're there, to me, it's not like, every, every turf company will tell you the reason that you have to replace turf in ten to twelve years is because of the UV rays, sun. So it's not, the most of the damage, the damage that's done to the, to the mound and home plate area, that's definitely just caused from wear and tear and stuff like that too. But, um, and, and I think, I don't know, the way molded cleats are made nowadays, they're not like the ones I wore that were rubber things. It's hard, hard plastic, and I think that they can do almost as much damage as, as the others. It's how you take care of the turf. It's how you, like, when the game's over, like, we'll have eight guys, like, pushing rubber back into the ground and, and like laying there for ten minutes to do it. And that's, that's the way it has to be done. You know, Travis even knows there's, there's been a couple of summer tournaments. I've gone out there on a Sunday afterwards and my coaching staff because it's been, it was really bad and it wasn't getting fixed during, during certain areas, like especially in the bullpens and stuff like that. So, um, like I said, we, we're always out there trying to, even when we don't play, like afterwards and stuff like that. But, yeah, it's, it's just, it's the home plate and, and mound area, which, you know, I came from a school that had turf. We had to replace them, we had to replace them every, you know, once a year or sometimes twice a year, just, and it's just usage.
So what's the general policy when you travel? Do they allow steel cleats?
Yes.
Every place does?
Yeah, yeah. Every, um, I'll say this, so every place that we play at, other than Oklahoma Wesleyan, I think the fields are the actual university's fields. And Oklahoma Wesleyan's field is the city's field. And we're allowed to wear metal spikes there. My, my players don't. I mean, they, they actually prefer, the, the molded cleats are better on their feet, they say, and they, they, they like them, so.
I, I guess I look at football. They don't wear steel cleats in football, do they?
I don't think so. They don't even wear them on steel cleats in grass, right?
Yeah.
I think it's because we're on, I think it's just been a dirt thing. I don't know. I mean, like I said, when we play natural surfaces, a lot of my guys, like I said, they wear them, they wear their molds because they, they say they're, they're better on their, better on their feet, so. But it's one of those things, if you don't have molded shoes, the style of turf that we have, if you're throwing down, you're just wearing flats, like I'm wearing the slippage and stuff like that, I think. And like I said, I know at the high school level, it's required everywhere to probably have flats or molds and, you know, I wish the college level would get to it. I wish just everybody would have turf.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approve ordinance number twenty-three, one, 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 four, eight, creating the turf maintenance and replacement fund and authorize staff to make a seventy-five thousand contribution to the fund in twenty twenty-three.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-three, dash, one, 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 four, eight, creating the turf maintenance and replacement fund and authorizing staff to make a seventy-five thousand dollar contribution to the fund in twenty twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five zero, thank you. That will lead us to item six point three.
Item six point two, approve resolution number two, three, dash, eight, one, two, one, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements for the purchase of vehicles and equipment approved under the twenty twenty-three sub-CIP.
Debbie, let's back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners again. The, the twenty twenty-three sub-CIP, which was approved in February of twenty twenty-three, included a little over two and a half, two point two million dollars in vehicles and equipment. Staff solicited bids for about twenty-three items on that list, that approved list, um, back in February. I've provided a list of items that were, uh, in that bid process and kind of what the staff's recommendation for those are. There were four bids that came in under budget and we are recommending that go to the low bidder. I'm not gonna go through each item as I've provided that for you. There also, there was also one bid that is not from the lowest bidder, but did come in under budget. The reasons for that recommendation was that because the low bidder didn't meet some minimum horsepower specifications. There were also, um, a few bids that came in over budget. There was two bids that came in over budget. The staff is recommending awarding to them as they were bid. There was one bid that came in, uh, for the dozer. That staff is recommending that we do not accept the bid and that we go out for re-bid, basically because the specifications that were submitted out were for a specific type of dozer, a D seven, what they call a D seven, which has a, was, which more, is more of a mid-size range, and the bids that we received didn't meet those specific specifications. The, the cost of these recommended, recommended bids against the budget will still allow that, even with estimated remaining items to be bid, all of the budget, uh, funds will be under budget at this point. If recommend, if the remaining items came in under budget, then we anticipate that, that we'd be under budget for this cycle. Also, if the recommended bid, uh, bids come in under budget, we anticipate that the capital reserve fund, the vehicle and replacement capital reserve fund will have a balance of about eight hundred ninety thousand dollars after these bids. Staff has identified the following options, which is to approve a resolution number two, three, eight, one, two, one, authorizing the city manager to ask, execute agreements with the selected vendors as recommended by staff. Approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate. Postpone consideration. Approve the resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate, postpone consideration, um, of the resolution to a specific date and time and provide us with additional information you would need to reconsider, or do not approve the resolution and provide staff with, uh, direction resulting in rebidding, delay of delivery and possible cost increases. Staff would recommend option number one. I do have, um, the central garage supervisor here that set up some, most of these specifications and could answer any questions about specifications or the bid process itself. Um, and I could stand for any questions that you might have.
Start to my right, no questions.
The bulldozer. You're, it did not meet specs and you're going to rebid. You only got one bid on that?
I believe I got two bid, they got two bids on that and neither one of them met the specifications of that D seven type bulldozer. Uh, key notes here, if you want more specific information on that, but there were two bids on that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
No questions.
It's about my pay grade when I look at the specifications. Budgeting, I maybe understand, but not the specifications, so.
That's why I have them with me.
Okay, there's no que, is there any comments or questions from the, the public? Okay, there are none. I will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 23-8121, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with selected vendors. I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second to approve resolution number 23-8121, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with selected vendors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five zero. Now that leads us to six point three. Got ahead of myself, didn't I?
Item six point three, approve ordinance number 23-11147 on first reading, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Regional Airport and Airport Industrial Center.
Good afternoon. They put all mine together so I could be all in front of you all at once. Um, Salina Airport Authority was established back in 1965 under state statute and within those, that realm of statutes, that gives them the opportunity to, to issue general obligation bonds, but there's a specific steps that have to be done in order for them to do that. First of all, their board of directors have to adopt a resolution, setting forth the principal amounts of those bonds, and then they have to bring that to the city commission, and the city commission has three options when it comes to approving those bonds. The first option is to, to disapprove the authority's, uh, thought, resolution by ordinance. The second one is to unconditionally approve the authority's resolution by ordinance, or the third is to approve the authority's resolution and to publish a notice of the authority's intent to issue general obligation bonds, subjecting the bond issued to a referendum election if a protest petition is signed not less than 20% of the qualified electors of the city and filed within 15 days of the published notice. Um, the, the statute, that series of statutes also further authorizes the authority levy to tax on the tangible personal property of, within the city in an amount efficient, sufficient to pay the interest and principal on that bond. So that's what gives them authority to issue the levy. Um, on March 15th, 2023, the Board of Directors of the Authority, um, adopted resolution 23-04, approving the issuance of not to exceed $10,235,000, um, in bond, in general obligation bonds for specific projects as I specified in the, um, staff report. Um, also, as you'll notice in the, in the, I wanted to just clarify something a little bit. You'll notice in their resolution, there's a table that lists some numbers and, and then there's a table in our ordinance that lists some numbers that do not match. But if you look at that a little bit closer, that resolution is the list of temporary notes that they have actually issued for those projects, not the bonds that they're intending to do. You have to look a little bit further in the resolution in section two that actually gives the bond authorization, and that's where the numbers tie out to our ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any confusion with those numbers. Any balance of the projects of these, uh, of these projects that aren't, um, funded by general obligation bonds will be, uh, funded through a combination of federal funds and available authority cash. I've provided both our resolution, or the authority's resolution and a copy of our ordinance. Um, as these are full faith and credit, uh, bonds against the authority, they do not count towards the city's bonded indebtedness limitations. Uh, the, the authority has, um, advised that these would be twen, 20-year general obligation bonds to finance portions of these construction projects and that, um, and that they anticipate that they would issue bonds in an amount, uh, of approximately $16,725,000 in 2023. And I noted in here that, that there are some certain parts of that statute that allow them to levy tax. One of them is for their own purpose and operating that, and that's limited at three mils. The sections 27, 3, 22B gives them auth, authority to issue, to levy tax as matching to federal or state grants, and that's capped at one mil. And then the third part of 27-3, 3, 23A actually is the one I mentioned earlier that does give them their authority to levy a tax to pay for the interest and principal of payment of debt. Um, and that doesn't, they don't have, that does not have a mil levy, um, limit, but it does, they can only limit up to less, anything less than 10% of the assessed valuation of the, of, in the city of Salina. Um, the authority's 2023 mil levy for their 2024 budget is forecasted not to exceed 6.99. Their current mil, uh, levy for their 2023 budget is 4.968. Um, staff has identified the following options for city commission's consideration. The first is to approve ordinance 23-11147, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the costs of, of projects. Item number, or option number two is to just, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to disprove the authority's resolution. And option three is to direct staff to prepare a resolution approving the authority's resolution and to public the notice, to publish the notice of the authority's intent to issue those general obligation bonds, subjecting the bond issued to a referendum election if a protest petition is signed by not less than 20% of elect, qualified electors of the city and filed within 15 days of the published notice. Staff recommends option number one. We also have, uh, the airport authority, Tim Rogers is here. If you'd have any questions about the, the authority's intent or the projects, he's more than willing to answer those and I'd be willing to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, I'll start to my right. Commissioner.
These three projects add up to the, uh, right.
These three projects add up to the $16,725, is that correct?
Um, Mayor Hobbit, Commissioner's Tim Rogers, Executive Director for the Airport Authority. These three projects do not add up to the 16 million, the 16 million, the, the additional numbers made up of, uh, temporary notes that have previously been authorized, uh, by, um, the Salinas, uh, City Commission. For example, one of those temporary notes projects that will be taking long-term financing, is the improvements to the terminal building and expanding the space for, for passenger seating and accommodating passengers. So the dollar amount for the, that is, the new authorizations being requested is for three projects that are essential projects to operating a, a public use airport. In addition to runways and taxiways, there are critical infrastructure items such as hangars for general aviation, uh, aircraft, uh, rehabilitation of, of former hangars, uh, in this case, hangar 626, formerly, former Air Force hangars, and then, uh, fuel, fuel storage. If I can comment briefly on these projects, the general aviation hangar project, uh, will build new hangars that will withstand Kansas winds, 112 mile, 20, be rated up to 112 miles an hour. The hangars that are being replaced and, uh, will be built were hangars that were brought over from the old airport, the old airport, and so they have actually kind of served their useful life, but they were severely damaged beyond repair by the December of 2021 windstorm. We have received, uh, uh, insurance funds, settlement funds, like through FEMA, of about $1 million, 990, $900,000, $992,000 that offsets the cost for the bond financing of those projects. Hangar 626, the MRO project, is to rehabilitate the hangar that was built in 1945. It is due for rehabilitation and will bring that back into use as an aviation MRO facility for aircraft management to repair and overhaul, and we do have a letter of intent to lease that hangar out. The fuel storage facility replaces an aging and outdated and obsolete underground fuel storage facility that was built by the United Ste, United States Air Force in the 1960s. Removing the, get eventually those tanks that are underground come up, will be removed, but will be built a new 200,000 gallon plus above-ground, state-of-the-art, uh, fuel facility. These are all projects that are really key and essential, uh, to the operation of a public use airport. They all have lifespans of 20 years plus and, uh, thus the need to go to cap to the, uh, general, general, general obligation bond financing for these projects. There are revenues coming off these projects, uh, for example, hangar 626, the general aviation hangars that the Airport Authority Board will then begin to use to offset mil levy requirements that, uh, reduce the need for mil levy for those hangars. The Airport Authority's budgets have started to do that, take operating revenue to offset the need for a mil levy. The mil levy number that you see in the agenda memo that we presented to the Board, Airport Authority Board of Directors, is the worst-case scenario for our 24 mil levy. We hope to bring that down to, uh, less than 6%. But we have to set a, not to exceed number on the, on these, on this forecasting at this point as we get into this process. I don't know if they addressed the, the specific question, but I wanted to give you that background and maybe I touched on a question that, uh, Commissioner Longmind you had.
Yeah, that was a lot of, a lot of good information. The different numbers here kind of had me. I didn't put the calculator to it myself. But the, uh, fuel facility, that will, that number includes removing the old fuel tanks?
That does not. That removal of the fuel tanks will be done with Airport Authority cash on hand, yeah.
And that's interesting about the hangars coming from the old airport.
Right.
I had no idea.
The old D hangars are out there and they, they hung in there for a long time. This last windstorm just took them all out and then they're unrepairable. The contractors that take, came in to take a look at it and said, okay, here's a cost for your insurance purposes, but we're not going to sign a contract to repair them because they don't want to have that. It's just, they don't want to repair them.
Kind of like a, uh, getting a nail in the sidewall of a tire, huh?
Right, yeah.
Are, are they full? Your hangars generally have hangars full?
Yes, the hangars are full. So all the tenants that have, uh, lost hangar space, uh, uh, were actually able to overbuild a bit, but all the tenants that lo, that have losses, that lost hangar space or are losing hangar space, they're giving, again, they were reserving their spaces for the new hangars, uh, and, uh, but will have some additional space to, uh, help, uh, get into our hangar waiting list and bring more aircraft to the Salina Airport.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. One, you're showing here that you're going to do bonding of 3 million on the hangars, but I go back and your, your, your note amount was 2,015. You have a million dollars from FEMA. Why is that, why are we bonding 3 million instead of 2 million?
We still have some additional work on taxiway work that we'll be doing. That'll be part of that bonding also as far as the, the, the GA hangar project, yes. So in addition, just to the, the hangars themselves.
Okay, it doesn't state that. It just states hangar. So when I took the three minus the one, I should add two. So there's a million dollars worth of paving work we're going to do also.
Some additional paving to gain access into those, into those areas.
And on the 626, I guess where I ran into troubles is, and, and I, you say you want the, the mil levy to be under that 6.9, which is the max. It, it bothers me that I don't have any cash flow. You know, I don't know what, you know, you're, you're spending this money, but we don't have what the rents are and.
Hangar six.
And so it, it would be helpful to me to know what the potential bonding amount really is.
Hangar six.
It's not going to be cash, I guess, that's not cash flowed through rents. It's going to actually have to be cash flowed through the, through the mil levy.
Hangar 626 should generate about a quarter million dollars a year, which should be equal to, uh, you know, in essence, a half a mil, close to half a mil. So that's why when we, and it's going to take, it basically a year to get that revenue generated by the time we get the building constructed. So really, budget year 24, preparing the budget year for 25, we can show that revenue coming in to then start to offset mil levy required for the financing. Um, the T hangars probably, we're looking at additional $75,000 per year that once they are full, then we can apply, the Airport Authority can apply that to the bond service account. So that's, uh, you know, getting close to the, we're getting pretty close to projecting, you know, the revenue generated close to one mil, uh, that we can start to then take operating revenue into the bond service account, the bond, uh, the bond reserve account for, for, for pay, principal and interest, then to lessen the trend on the use of the mil levy.
Okay, and then the fuel facility, who does that service? Is that for everyone? Is that Av, Avflight? Who actually uses that?
Avflight, uh, is the operator of the, uh, of the fuel farm, but that fuel supplies fuel every airport user. Civilian, government, military, that is, uh, base aircraft and, uh, transit aircraft, everybody, uh, that's using the airport.
Okay.
So there's no competition on fuel?
Well, there is. We compete on that.
Certain people have contracts with them, I suppose.
Well, so that, we can, okay, how, how much longer do you want to, I don't know whether to go on this one, uh, but this is, nationally, we compete. We're, we're a national regional competition on fuel for, for the trans, transcontinental fuel stop. Uh, military, government rates are set. Uh, so that is set by the Department of Defense. Uh, we, you know, Avflight, who is the, the fixed base operator, the Airport Authority, it does not set the price of fuel. We lease to, uh, the operator, uh, Avflight is Salina, the sole fuel provider in the airport, but they also then compete within the region for that price of fuel. So it's, it's, it is a number of factors involved, but for the base pilot, for the regional pilot, for the business jet travel, the air carrier charter flights that land here, that's a, that is a national competition as far as fuel price. So it is competitive. And, you know, we're past the day and age when, uh, most airports can have two FBOs at an airport, two refueling stations, you know, to compete. Locally, it's a national competition.
We used to have two providers, didn't we?
Did, and they were both, almost went broke and almost shut down almost simultaneously until Avfuel brought in their national, uh, operation of, of Av, Avflight.
So does the Airport Authority make any, get any cut off the fuel sales?
There is a fixed rental on the lease to Avflight for their facilities and then an eight, eight cent per gallon fuel flowage fee that comes in off the sale of each gallon.
Thank you.
It's roughly 2 million gallons a year sold at Salina, uh, on that basis and roughly a hundred thousand gallon, a hundred thousand dollars a year that comes back. That, that is operating revenue to pay for the, uh, snow removal, the, the, keeping the lights on, the runways on and those types of activities to keep the airport running day to day.
So to, to, to service the 8.4 million, is there, where's that income come from or is that all just going to be through mil levy?
It will be airport leasehold revenue servicing a part of that and then, then it will be mil levy, uh, to make up that difference.
And is this, uh, out, you know, changing out this fuel facility, is this a requirement or is this just something that's being upgraded?
I would say the current facility is environmentally not sustainable from a regulatory standpoint and also the standards of, of the day. We're also up. So we'll have the capability to handle biodiesel in addition to fossil fuel, Jet A, moving forward. And so we can transition to that sustainable aviation fuel. But it's to go from an obsolete refueling system that we were given, that was handed over by the Air Force and getting it now to a system that can sustain us over the 20...
The facility would be how old then? Gosh, 70, 80 years old then?
Yeah.
Something like that? Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions from the public?
Do we still have Flora Aviation?
Go ahead.
Ben Wenholt Salina, this is probably a question from Mr. Rogers. Ben, since we're going to a new fueling station that's above-ground, state-of-the-art, I'm just curious how, what state-of-the-art there is for possible lightning strikes and Kansas wind for above-ground tanks?
Thank you for the question opportunity. Again, the design standards and, and working with Salina Building Services, all buildings, all structures are wind rated for the 112, 114 Molinar winds, the sustained winds. So all the structures are wind rated for our region and area according to code. We're also following code as far as international electrical code, fire code, working with Fire Marshal, Marshall and Fire Marshal, Mark Troy Long, thank you. So I'm, so the Fire Marshal, so that it is rated for lightning strikes. All the facilities have the grounding and the capability to accept that. And I think we are again getting to the standard that, that I believe environmentally and even from fire protection that we have the above-ground storage so we eliminate spills and, and the possibility of leaks in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where will it be built at, Tim?
What's that?
Where will it be built?
The new fuel farm will be located just to the south of existing underground storage tanks. Shelling Court is still the entry point for the transports in and out and we don't want to disrupt that. So it's going to be just to the north of the existing underground tanks, just south of the Kansas Army National Guards Aviation Armory.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. Oh, I did have one question, Ms. Peck. It says unconditionally. Do we always have that on there? I just, I always say approve it. I don't, it threw me when it said unconditionally.
No, that is part of the statute requirements for the specific process.
Okay, I guess I wasn't dreaming.
There are removal approval ordinance number 23-11147, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of the projects.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number 23-11147, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of various projects. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. That will lead us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with WSKF Architects for Phase 1 Design Services for Fire Station Number 4 in the amount of $147,760.
I'll be taking this one.
Oh, there you are. I was looking.
Mayor Commissioners, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood. So the Fire Station 4 relocation has been on the city's radar since about 2014. It's the first time I saw that it appeared on one of our budgeting documents, our long-range CIP planning. In 2022, we actually moved it into the five-year capital improvement plan with, with design anticipated to take place between 2022 and 2023 and then construction shortly to follow. So last year, midsummer, we released a request for qualifications for design and engineering services. In September, we received responses from 10 firms. We have an evaluation committee that consists of several members of the Fire Department and Chief Tony Snyder is over there if there's any questions that come up for him in a little while, myself. We had the city engineer, our facility superintendent, and we also had an individual from the Arts and Humanities Department that sat in on, on these review as well. We narrowed the, the list from 10 down to four and during the week, the first week of October, we interviewed those four firms. And as a result of those interviews and further investigation of the similar projects that WSKF has done, reference checks and, and just the overall ability of the firm to perform, we are recommending that we enter into an agreement with WSKF Architects. They have worked for the city in the past. In 2018, we had them do a space needs survey and do some preliminary station layouts for us. So we're familiar with them and it'll be the same people that worked in the past that will do, that will lead this project going forward. When this project was originally placed on the capital improvement program a few years ago, we, we set aside $500,000 for design and we, we thought the project would be around $4 million. And that was kind of based on some of the work that was done in that 2018 need survey. Well, since that time, inflation has happened, lots of changes in the market right now. So we were kind of taking a little bit different approach than what we might normally in a, in a project like this and we're requesting that we split it into two phases. The first phase is, is what we're trying to get approval for today and that will include four aspects. First is space programming. So we'll have WSKF with their experts come in, sit down with us. We'll determine, you know, what we actually need as far as, you know, the number of garage bays, the number of beds, all of those sorts of things. They'll do some schematic design work and selection of things like furniture, fixtures, some of the equipment that will go in the facility. They'll do all the developmental services stuff so that, that's like your surveys, topography. They'll go through the process for rezoning, plating of the property and drainage study and make sure we have all that together. And at the end of that, they'll come back with a cost estimate. So that cost estimate is what we'll use to go with the next phase of design. So we expect Phase 1, will take six to nine months to complete and at the end of that, then we'll come back to the city commission with the, with the final, with the Phase 2 agreement, which will include the final design, bidding services, and then construction and oversight of construction. So Phase 1, as we've said, is 147,760. We anticipate the next phase of this project will take between $400,000 and $600,000. Some of that's going to be dependent on the results of the space and needs analysis and kind of once we go through the needs and the wants analysis and figure out where we need to be, then, then we'll know what Phase 2 will look like. As far as the fiscal note, we did include $500,000 for design, as I said, and $4 million in the 2023 CIP for construction. As I said, both of these numbers are probably out of date. Once we get more on the scope, have it, have Phase 1 completed, we'll have a little bit more about what we think the actual cost is going to be. We do anticipate that's going to be between seven and a half and nine and a half million dollars based on just some preliminary discussion that we've had with WSKF to this point. And so once we get to that point, we'll have some more discussions about how we finance the plan and we'll have a, a solid plan to bring forward to you. I do want to mention, as we move forward, this project has been identified as something that's appropriate for aesthetic enhancements under our community art and design policy, which means we could spend up to 5% of the total project cost on art. I don't anticipate it will be that high, but we have already brought in arts and humanities to be part of this design from the very front end. So there will be some art aesthetic component to the, the structure as we move forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions and then Rick Cool from WSKF is also on the line if there's any questions for him.
Any comments or questions?
Did we land on that location on East Crawford and that's it or are there other locations?
Yeah, yes, we are, we are looking at, at the north end of Berkeley Family Recreation, right there on Crawford.
Has the consultant looked at that and it meets their specifications for size?
Yes, yes, they have. And actually, they, they initially did that kind of site assessment in 2018 and that's the site that they were working with. We did go back and the chief kind of looked at that site to determine, you know, is that still, you know, where we think we want to go and, and looked at it and determined that is an appropriate location for the future growth and then also the response times in the, in the area that the, the station currently services. So we feel confident that that's the right location in to move forward.
When we estimated the 4 million, was that just our estimate or was that, have construction costs gone up that much?
I think that was, I think a little bit of both. I think construction costs have gone up, but it was, I think it was more of a city staff kind of estimate. I don't think we had very, we didn't have a very detailed estimate at that time.
And I would look at my fellow commissioners, have any of you, who hasn't been through Station 4?
I've been through it.
Have you been through it?
I've been through it.
Okay. So we always have an open house when we do something. We ought to have an open house for Station 4 now so people understand why we need a new one. We always have one when something's built, but it's, we should have an open house on this because it, it's beyond it.
Sure.
Tony Snyder, Fire Chief. So Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, we did have an open house. So we need to have another one so everybody else gets the opportunity. Two of the current city commissioners did attend that time, but I do understand we also have a ton of other responsibilities, so I will facilitate that.
I was just kind of kidding. You don't have to.
No, we, we...
People really ought to, I mean, we're spending a lot of money, but they really...
If you haven't seen it, this is something, as you've heard me say, you know, you talk about the future of the fire service and we create our own future. This is another one of those stepping stones. So looking at the growth, looking at the location, it's the first thing, it's one of the very first things I did when I got here was looked at why we were set on that location to understand, you know, I was told, oh, it's there because the city owns the property. I said, well, let's look at it from the bigger picture. Let's look at it from the 30,000-foot view and it absolutely makes sense to protect the not only current but future growth of the city. We talk about, you know, the response times and, you know, resiliency within the city. These are important things and this is going to be an important component. So I'm looking forward to this project. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No questions.
I, I had a couple.
Yes, thank you.
Has anyone visited any of WSKF's designs, stations? I'm assuming they've, they've designed and built fire stations before.
Yes, they do. That's, their specialty is fire stations. And actually, they built one, I believe it was Andover, and we did have folks go down and take a look at that one and, and talk to the fire chief through that process. So yeah, we're, we've been impressed with the work that they've done. They really specialize, there's, there's, there's different kind of architecture firms that, that either they specialize or they have people that they work with that specialize in these sorts of things and this is really their bread and butter. So they're not hiring a consultant from the outside to help them. They're, they're doing all the work themselves. It's, it's really the thing they do. So we're, we've been very impressed with them. All of the, the references that we've talked to, we're impressed with them. We feel like they're, they're going to be the best folks to move forward with on this design.
That's good. And how many bays are you looking at? Because I, I visioned Station 4. You know, are we going to be able to afford to fill this station?
Yeah, so I, I'm going to answer that, Chief.
I get it.
Chief wants 10, so. No, I, that's really part of this, splitting this into phases, is sitting down and looking at those things and figuring out, okay, what do we actually need? And then, you know, it's kind of deciding what are our needs and what are our wants. We're looking, I would say likely it will be four or five bays. If we can get five bays and, and it's not too cost prohibitive, I think we'll try to do that just because of the equipment that we currently have. We've got stuff that's stored outside. We've got, so I think the, the equipment that we currently have, we could certainly use five bays, but that's going to have to be part of that conversation about cost. We also don't have $12 million. So, so we, we've got to figure out how to get, get the cost where we need it to be. But I anticipate it will be four or five bays. If we can make it five bays and not do, get too far out of line on the cost, then that's what we're going to shoot for.
Okay, so, so we...
Was that okay, Chief?
Yeah. How many, how many bays do you want, Chief?
So to add on specifically, I have 186 linear feet of equipment that is currently being stored outside of fire stations. So you take that into consideration and when you look at a firehouse in today's world and you look at the future growth of the city, there are, what I'm looking for and I'm hoping for is five bays. I believe that would facilitate for future growth. It would facilitate what we have right now and, and allow us some maneuverability dependent upon certain circumstances and different things that could occur. So I'm, I'm considering 20 years, 25 years, 30 years down the road and looking at statistics and looking at predictability of that as well as best we can. So those, that, that's what I would love to have. But again, we will go through that process with WSKF and, and they're good at this, you know, and I'm looking at what components will be there. Right now, Station 4, we have two units. We have an engine and a medic unit. That's who's there all the time. Down the road, there's going to be a need for more at some point. As, as we grow, we're going to need more. But that's down the road and we've discussed these things as we move forward. Try to be, try to predict them so that we don't just suddenly say, we're short, now what? So we're trying to work that process for really looking in the future so we can plan things out 10, 15, 20 years down the road and have a plan. So that's where we stand. Five bays is what I would love to have.
All right.
Thank you.
Five bays it is.
Are there site challenges or infrastructure in that location or is that natural?
Well, there are some, some utilities that are unique in the area. There's some water lines and sewer lines that are going to have to, probably the sewer line. There's a 20-inch water main that runs in that area and we're going to stay away from that if we can. So the, but there's a sewer line that will have to be relocated, but we don't think it'll be a real issue, so.
And the old building?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The old building, the former?
We have multiple divisions clamoring for the old building in the organization.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, with that, we will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hawk, I move that this governing body authorize city manager to execute an agreement with the WSKF Architects for Phase 1 Design Services for Fire Station Number 4 in the amount of $147,760.
Second. We have a motion and second authorizing the city manager execute an agreement with WSKF Architects for Phase 1 Design Services for Fire Station Number 4 in the amount of All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to item 6.5.
Item 6.5, background and discussion of advisability of the issuance of $21 million taxable industrial revenue bonds for Beck's Superior Hybrids of Atlanta and establishing a public hearing date of April 10, 2023.
Okay, as previously noted, I have a conflict, conflict of interest on item 6.5 and 7.2, so I will recuse myself and turn it over to Vice Mayor Longmine. Thank you.
I guess I can say evening now, Commissioners. I'm Mitch Robinson, Executive Director of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. Glad to, to be here. We've got kind of a, as you well know now, we've got kind of a two-piece, two-pronged discussion tonight of, of Beck's Superior Hybrids. This is a company we've been working with since, it's hard to believe, and I went back to look at the dates, December 16th of 2021, we were contacted by a Realtor that was, is working with the company. And we started having discussions at that point. They were looking for a site that was along Interstate 70 or along Interstate 135. At that point, that's what we were looking at. Jeff Mays, who's here tonight, provided them different options and then on April 19th of 2022, we actually had our first face-to-face visit with the company. The city manager and, and other community leaders met with them at the airport. They flew in a team of about seven company representatives, including CEO Sonny Beck. Sonny, I believe is the third generation of the company. This is a family-owned business, very, very, I'll say very... I'll say, a very Christian business, are very dedicated to farming and to our country. If you've seen any of their billboards along the interstates in the area, you'll see their commitment. And this is an opportunity. Their business has been growing westward, and they were looking for a location somewhere for their warehousing operation. So, they're looking at building a 96,000-square-foot building, and their intent is to supply Kansas farmers with corn, beans, wheat, and sorghum, and probably if there's any other crops that pop up, they'll be very much involved in doing research. They're a very research-driven company. They will be working with K-State. They've already met with them a couple times. They've already looking at hiring interns from K-State. So, they're very well tied into working with universities, being in Indiana. They're very tied in with Purdue, which is the, the land-grant institution in, in Indiana. So, this facility will be, be open from 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. It will host customer events. It will be, there'll be farmer field days. I've been by their one in Kentucky, which is close to where my family lives, and it's a very beautiful facility, well-maintained, something the community would be very proud to have here. So, during these summer events, they bring in several thousand people to look at the test plots that they'll be raising here on, on part of this property. So, on April 19th, that day, Jeff and I showed the, the company representatives the different sites. We drove back and forth along the interstate, trying to narrow it down, and it looks like that was a good start. And since then, the company's been able to narrow down a site to, off of Ohio Street that we'll be talking about a little bit later. Future growth of the company, it's not, this warehouse is not gonna be a huge employer, but there'll be quality jobs. They're looking at first year, just starting off with a couple people during the final year of construction. And, and then when they're ready for the warehouse, they'll be looking at five jobs. So, there'll be a total of seven. Year three, there'll be another two, and then the fourth year, one. So, we've got our economic impact study that Wichita State has. This is on the bottom of the first page, and you'll see the numbers there on the salary ranges. We were able this time to get the average wage and the median wage. So, Dr. Davis, hopefully that'll, will give it a little bit range. And obviously, you do see a, a much higher number on the first year, because, you know, they'll be hiring their management team. So, that number would be different than if it's just warehouse people. But the warehouse numbers are very good as well. So, much, probably almost double, not quite double, what our average wage is now. So, it's a very good, they're very, they take care of their people. So, on November 22nd, 2022, a special board of directors meeting was called for the Salina Community Economic Development Organization to consider issuance of industrial revenue bonds for Beck's. They are based in Atlanta and always wanna, wanna say Georgia, but no, they're an Indiana company. They've got several facilities there in Indiana. So, Sonny and his facility manager came in to make the presentation to the board. The, the location is adjacent to the Foley Equipment dealership there on North Ohio Street. Mr. Beck provided a, a review of the family-owned business and the growth that they've been able to see over the years. It's a tremendous company, and the next couple generations are already involved in the business as well. So, that will be, that will continue down the line, I'm sure. The board of directors went into a closed session after hearing their presentation and came back out into open session. And we had a, a motion by Frank Hampton. It was seconded by Max Obachtaly to recommend to the commission a 10-year, 100% abatement on the property tax and also the abatement on the sales tax on the materials used in the construction of the building. So, it carried 5 to nothing. So, the industrial revenue bond steps, we've kinda gone through this a couple times, but recently, but let's just do this again. I always wanna remind everybody in the audience and online that this is not a obligation of the city. This is a direct obligation of the company. There is no requirement for the city to pay. If the company, for some reason, would, would go out of business, there is no obligation there. So, our first step is to get the cost-benefit analysis. That has been provided. We have gotten that from Wichita State. And now, the second step would be, if you so agreed to, April 10th would be the date for the public hearing, which is also when the resolution of intent is also approved at that point. And that kinda is the starting point at that point. It's kinda the, the, I always think of the racetrack and the bell going off there. So, that's the starting point. And then the company can go through and, and work through the construction. And, and then we'd come back after the, near the end of the project to come back and do the final agreements. The impact study came back, numbers all positive, well above for the city number, 1.43. And we remember, we always looking at around 1. The county number, which is normally the, the toughest number, came in at 1.09. The state of Kansas, which has got the, the big bucks here, we're looking at 4.73%. And then District 305, which is the school district that has that location, they're at 1.35. So, under the actions that are before you all, if you turn to the back, back page, first, number one, would approve a motion instructing staff to proceed with the necessary preparation for the city commission to initiate the industrial revenue bonds on April 10th. Number two would be postpone, consideration of this matter to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the commission would like to request. Or, number three, vote to deny industrial revenue bond financing for Beck's of Atlanta, Indiana. And I'll be more than happy to answer questions that all the commissioners would like to have.
Questions?
Do I have to go up there to ask?
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of line. This, questions for the commission.
Oh, okay, sure.
Guess the one question I have, and it's just more out of curiosity, why Salina?
That's a great, that's a great question. They are in the process of building a facility. I don't think I said this. They're looking at, this is, we would be the, either the ninth or the 10th state that they've located facilities in. They are building a facility up on Interstate 80 in Nebraska. So, it's a natural, easy flight, not flight, well, they got, they have planes, so they can fly. But a drive down from Interstate 135, basically, that's, transportation is the key moving of, shipping of the seeds and different products they have. You know, that's a cost, so it's, that's something they look at. So, transportation.
That's probably similar to my question. Sorry, similar to my question. Are they, then, they're the third-largest seed company? I'm assuming they're already doing business. Do they look at this for growing regional business or not places west of, of here?
Uh, well, this is, the main intent will be for the state. They are doing some business already in the eastern part of, of the state, but they're all coming out of, I'm trying to think of where they're supplying, supplying them. Note, they don't have a facility in Missouri, and they don't have one here currently. So, everything is having to be trucked out of probably Iowa or Indiana. So, this'll help kinda leapfrog ahead.
And those job numbers will stay pretty flat? I mean, just the nature of the business, it's not something that you look for exponential growth over the next 30 years?
No, it's, it's not like a manufacturing plant. It's strictly a distribution center. There will be some additional jobs across the state, but those folks will be sales folks, and they'll be based all over the state. So, they, we wouldn't count them here as part of our headcount, so to speak.
Okay, so, that probably just ends my last question. So, we don't get much sales tax from them? Is it, 10 years from now, would it be just property tax we're getting? Or are there sales actually out of Indiana?
I don't know if we get sales tax off ag products.
Okay. So, it's just, just the property tax then, basically? And this is all truck-based? They don't use rail?
They, no, no.
Yeah, I guess my question was, what was their closest location to here? I guess I-80 would, it's under construction.
Yeah, I, I can't, it's, Jeff, can you, you remember the name of the town?
Born Nebraska.
He'll be up here in a second. You can ask him.
Okay. And the sales tax, the ag products would be tax-exempt?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Here in the packet, you know, from the economic development, 10-year tax abatement and abatement on sales tax. But that is not what we're approving today. It's just the revenue bonds. Is that correct?
Well, all you're proving today is setting a date for a public hearing. That's all you're doing today.
Okay.
The company will be here on the 10th of April. That's our, that's our hope that they'll be able to make that.
And, and I've seen their billboard down outside of Wichita. What is their slogan? Founded in faith, forged in...
Yeah, I've been...
Jeff knows it.
Is it on the board?
No.
It's like, it's freedom. Founded in faith and forged in freedom.
Commissioners, Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th, here on behalf of Beck's. First of all, as Mitch indicated, they had planned to be here, and we held them off until the date to, because they would like to be before you and ask for your support. Sonny was, was all set up to be here, and we, and we, we told him to hold off, because we weren't gonna be able to take any action. So, he will be here on the 10th, and you can ask him all of your, all of your questions. But I believe it's founded in faith and forged in freedom.
Forged in freedom, yeah. That's, that's great.
They try and keep, they try and put these facilities, as they've now grown, and they're, and they're rapidly doing this, in a roughly 200-mile radius. Thus, to answer your question, the Salina thing fits, not, not to mention the central location to service the rest of the state. One thing that is, as, as Mitch indicated, the field days are a big deal, where they bring farmers in from all over and say, this is why you wanna plant Beck's rather than any of those other four-letter words. But they, but they, these, these seed plots, which you'll see, I think we've got some, some boards, are very well manicured and taken care of. I mean, it, it's a nice-looking facility outside of just the structure that's built. And they'll bring in, you know, 1,000, 1,500 people for these field days, which run a couple days long. So, there's some of that impact to be considered as you consider economic development questions. We can talk more about the development stuff on the next agenda item, but I mainly wanted you to know that the Beck's would, would have been here, and we told them to wait for your action, so that they can be here to answer and...
So, do they anticipate farmers staying overnight or going home?
Interestingly, yes, they do. They just got back from, anyway. Yes, they do, but the reason that they have these planes is because many farmers don't, either can't or don't like to be away from the farm overnight, because they got cattle to feed or they got irrigation to make sure it's still running. And so, they will go pick the farmer up and fly him to their facility and have him home for dinner at 5:00. You know, and, and that's how, they've grown their business in that capacity. And, I mean, not just one person they're putting on this plane, but they'll go, in fact, they just last week picked a big group up out in Hayes. So, they're, they're coming to Kansas. There is a but-for question, and it was unfortunate that the timing happened the way it did for your guys' consideration, because it was our hope to have it be in front of you, the, the incentive question be in front of you first, and then we can talk about the planning pieces. That didn't, it didn't sort out quite that way for us, but there is very much a but-for question here for them. So, you're talking, again, it's roughly a $21 million project, looking at, coming into the community.
Based on a quick review of their website, it looks like the nearest location is Goner, if I'm pronouncing that right, Nebraska, west of Lincoln. And then they have five locations in Iowa and five locations in Illinois. And then more locations east of there.
There's more, there's more coming.
Big foreign country. You got any idea how many employees they have total?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't know their total number. I don't. And again, you'll get, I look forward to meeting Mr. Beck.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are great questions for him, that he would love to answer.
And I, I think it's a great opportunity here. It's something that we've never had here.
Yeah.
And it's new business, so.
They're very, very big into the ag research and, and all of that. So, there's a, as he, as Mitch indicated, they're working closely with K-State, so.
Any comments from the public?
I just have a quick question.
You gotta come to the microphone.
I'm Tanya Greer. I reside here in Salina. I just wanted to know, the area that they're gonna be doing this, is that where the flooding, like, where a lot of the flooding is when it rains? Because I was wondering, before I even heard of this project, if there was ways that, where the flooding areas are because of the drought that the farmers are dealing with, if there was a way that they could pipeline water to the, the farmers, if they're close by or not too far, you know, to give them, so the cattle ain't dying and, and, you know, they have rainwater at least, you know? Because there's a lot of rain that gets in some places, and it could be, you know, piped line somewhere else? I mean, this is a simple question. Is it something that they could do or will be doing?
We'll be talking about the site in the next item.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, there's just a question.
A few more minutes, and I can barely answer that for you. Any other comments? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we approve a motion instructing staff to proceed with the necessary preparation for the city commission to initiate industrial revenue bond financing for Beck's Superior Hybrids of Atlanta and set a public hearing date for April 10th, 2023.
Second?
That was Atlanta, Indiana?
Yeah.
Indiana, yeah.
There is an Atlanta, Kansas, too. We've had a motion in a second to approve instruction staff to proceed with the necessary preparation for the city commission to initiate industrial revenue bond financing for Beck's Superior Hybrids of Atlanta, Indiana, and set a public hearing date for April 10th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Now, on to development business, Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, approve ordinance number 23-11150 on first reading, changing the zoning district classification from A1 to I2 to allow construction of a sales office and warehouse space for property located on the west side of North Ohio Street, south of I-70, directly south of Foley Equipment Company.
Mr. Andrew.
I put a storyboard up there that depicts, it's actually an aerial, or a photo of the actual proposed location with the facility superimposed on it. Beck's Hybrid Seeds has an opportunity to purchase 15.43 acres on the west side of North Ohio Street from DK Farm and Ranch. This property is located south of Foley Equipment and south of I-70 in the area outlined in blue there. They have filed applications to rezone this property and to plat the property to allow construction of a new 96,000-square-foot building, which would serve as a sales office, warehouse space, research space. And the property in question was annexed into the city in 2001, and that was done as part of a city commission initiated... and that was done as part of a city commission initiated North Ohio Utility Improvements Project. And that project extended new water and sewer service to properties in the vicinity of the Ohio Street-I-70 interchange. And so if you look at a map of the city or this particular map, you'll find a, there's a red city limit line and then there's a gap between the south end of that line and the remainder of the city. And the idea behind that was that the area south of that red line lies in the floodway for Mulberry Creek and is not considered to be developable property. So the city annexed and included in the benefit district only that property that was in the mapped flood plain, which is developable property but subject to periodic flooding. So this property was included in that benefit district and was assessed for water and sewer service. The facility that we're being considered here is for offices, crop seed sales, research, warehousing, and storage of vehicles. When city staff met with Bex representatives, we determined that they had many similarities to the facility that Foley Equipment just built, which is zoned I2. And so we determined that I2 zoning would be the most appropriate zoning classification. When planning staff met with Bex design team, we pointed out two other things. One is that this property is in the mapped 100-year flood plain, except for the very northwest corner. And the northwest corner is the portion of the property where they're proposing to put their facility. So their facility is going to be outside of the mapped flood plain. And then the other aspect of this is this property lies within the North Ohio Gateway Overlay District. And in that district, they're required to have their site plan and building plans approved by the planning commission. So as we noted in our packet, the item got postponed by the planning commission several times while alternate negotiations went on for property to the west. That did not come to fruition. And so the property we're talking about has 554 feet of frontage on Ohio and it's 1,050 feet south of the interchange. And so Bex believes that this is a suitable location for their facility because of the interstate exposure and also because of the flat agricultural land in the vicinity. Back in 2007, because there were city commission concerns about the appearance of development coming in from the interstate gateway, there was an overlay district adopted and that sets out front yard landscaping and parking lot surface requirements that are over and above the standard zoning. And so this property would be subject to those overlay standards. So if you were to approve I2 zoning, that would be compatible with the zoning and uses of the Foley Equipment property. And this site would be developed in accordance with those same overlay district standards. We have public water and sewer in this area. There's natural gas and electric lines already in place. This area is already served by Salina Police and Fire Departments. And so there wouldn't be any strain or burden on public utilities or services. The planning commission, as we noted, postponed hearing on this several times until the March 7th meeting where they acted and voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the applicant's request for I2 zoning, subject to satisfactory platting of the property. Also at that meeting, they approved the proposed site plan and building design for Bex facility to be located in the northwest corner of the site. We have a copy of that site plan in your packet showing the building in the northwest corner. And then this photograph here shows you the building elevations that the planning commission reviewed and approved. So your options this evening would be to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the attached ordinance on first reading. That would change the zoning of this property from agricultural to light industrial. You could disagree with the recommendation of the planning commission and return this item back to them, asking them to reconsider their recommendation. You could recommend that this be postponed to a future meeting or you could prove a motion to deny the applicant's request for I2 zoning. I think with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have about the site or about the zoning requests. And again, we have Mr. Mays here representing Bex.
Question?
More of an observation, just it looks like another opportunity to dress up the gateway corridor on North Ohio and it looks like a good fit for that location.
I think the facility being proposed is very comparable and compatible with the Foley Equipment location that's there.
No questions?
None here. Good fit.
So if I have any questions, Mr. Mays, does he have anything to add? That looks like a beautiful facility.
Sorry. Looks like a beautiful facility and as Commissioner Linkowitz said, I think it'll be a good asset to the entry. Any comments for the public? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Vice Mayor moved to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number 23-11150 on first reading, changing the zoning district classification of this property from A1 to I2.
Second? I've got a motion and a second to concur with the planning commission and approve ordinance number 23-11150 on first reading, changing the zoning district class on this property from A1 to I2, light industrial. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. We'll welcome back Mayor Hopp. Okay, thank you. That'll lead us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, approve ordinance number 23-11149 on first reading, amending the PC2 district boundary and approve an amended site development plan for the former Town and Country Veterinary Clinic property at 1001 Shiple Drive.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. In December, you approved a, a planned neighborhood shopping district to allow the former Town and Country Veterinary Clinic to be converted into a beauty salon, as was proposed by two businessmen from Manhattan who had a similar operation there. That ordinance allowed them to move forward with the purchase of the property and conversion of that into a beauty salon operation. In January of this year, we received a building permit application and updated survey of the property. And upon receipt of the revised survey and review of the recorded deed, it became apparent to staff that the legal description that was provided to us with the rezoning application understated the area being purchased by the applicant. So we determined that the zoning lot also should have included 22 feet of adjoining lots to the east. And the rezoning ordinance rezoned only Lot 8, Block 4, which has 123 feet of frontage on Shiple Drive. And what they actually purchased has 145 feet of frontage on Shiple Drive. So we looked at this, finally figured out that there was 145 feet of width there in our review and determined that we had underzoned the property. So the reason for bringing this back to you is to allow you to consider an amendment to the boundary of that district. And, and essentially, it's a housekeeping fix that would make all of their property they purchased zone the same and all available for beauty salon use. So the planning commission reviewed this at their March 7th meeting and voted to recommend approval of an amendment of the original planned district to incorporate the west 22 feet of Lot 14 and a portion of Lot 13, Block 4, into the zoning lot for the proposed beauty salon conversion. So your options tonight would be to approve a replacement ordinance on first reading that would replace the December ordinance, which approved the original district, but which had an incomplete legal description. Or you could disagree with the recommendation of the planning commission and return this item to them for reconsideration. You could recommend that consideration of this ordinance be postponed to a future meeting date. Or you could approve a motion to deny the amendment of the boundary and leave the original boundary in place. This whole case goes to the advantages of having a survey done of the property before you complete the purchase so you know exactly what, what it is that you're getting. And so this was a case where we moved ahead with zoning the property, got the survey afterwards and determined that the two legal descriptions didn't fit. So this is, this is essentially a cleanup of that to make the boundaries fit. That'd be open to any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Very simple. Any questions or comments from the public? You might get off easy on this one, Mr. Andrew.
If only we'd had a survey to start with, we'd have gotten off easy.
Wouldn't be here, would you? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approve, approval of ordinance number 23-11149 on first reading, repealing and replacing ordinance number 22-11139, which approved the original planned C2 district and site development plan for 1,001 Shiple Drive, which had an incomplete legal description.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11149 on first reading, repealing and replacing ordinance number 22-11139, which approved the original planned C2 district and site development plan for 1001 Shiple Drive, which is an incomplete legal description. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, that will bring us to other business. Any commissioner have, look to my left.
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis?
Oh, there was something. I didn't want any actors, oh, it was something that we.
Do you want us to go on and maybe you'll think about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I wrote it down somewhere, but I have no idea where I wrote it. Yeah, keep going.
Okay, we'll be back.
Little commentary, I have not.
I did think of one thing when we were looking at the transient guest tax. And we have, the transient guest tax currently on Homewood Suites is going, is not going into our original.
Starbond District, correct.
Yeah, it goes into the Starbond District. And I know that's a little bit ahead of schedule. It would be kind of interesting to see where we think that comes out. And at some point, that transient guest tax will go back into the bucket that will help fill, like turf replacement, stuff for tenant, all that. So just out of curiosity, that, not something we have to have next week, but just something for future commissions.
Some of you have heard me say this before. There's been quite a bit of conversation about the growth in transient guest tax. We, in 2022, we were nominally above 2018. The growth that we've experienced so far is COVID recovery. So the trend is positive, but we are just slightly above 2018 numbers at the moment.
Anyway, that would be.
But we, we can take a look at the.
Yeah, just to be curious, is when we think that comes off and what that, because I know their, their occupancy rate's been really good and that'll.
Yeah, it all kind of goes into a bucket. So if Homewood Suites is performing well, but there's other fluctuations, one offsets the other. So it'd be a little hard to project, but we are, more broadly, trying to project forward the, the performance of the Starbond District.
I remember, I remembered one of the two of them. Two people asked me Sunday if we were going to have any more discussion about what to do with the old ice skating rink in, I guess that's technically Oakdale Park. At one time, we had thought about making it a memorial, a reflection, or a meditation park. Another time, filling it in, and just several proposals. I said, well, no, it hasn't really risen to the top of the agenda recently. But just throwing it out, I didn't know if there was any group or organization who'd come forth with any plans for that.
It was originally the old swimming pool.
Really? It was a big pool. I mean, that whole area was the pool?
Yeah.
So to preview strategic planning a little bit, one of the questions I plan to put to you is removing the concrete that's there now. That at least clears the site. It was painted as an artistic installation. That's getting dated and fading. That doesn't answer the rest of the question, what becomes of that, that property. But in the meantime, we could at least get it back to a presentable turf. And then there would be opportunities for reuse by others.
That was it. Okay. Okay, with that, that brings us to citizens forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to come forward and talk about a subject of their concern. And please limit your comments to three minutes.
Richard Albert Humphrey II, Salina, Kansas. I'm just here today just to water that seed back in May about the small business proclamation. I believe it's my goal to remind us it is our goal to aggressively study and exercise professionally marketing strategies to keep our small business families alive. I think you guys are doing awesome. Thanks for all your work and that's all I got. Cool, have a day. Thank you.
Tanya Greer again. I just wanted to address a few things regarding, you know, I'm a huge dog lover and, you know, a big part of my heart is completely broken and has been for the last five years of everything that I've gone through with the dog issues. I want to make a point very clear that these dogs, and the ones that I've had, were extremely sweet-natured and stuff. And it's the way a person raises them. And I think it's very discriminating and ignorant to judge a dog by its coat, its breed, or whatever. So I'm working with the Kansas Humane Society. And my brother, who lives right outside the Grain Belt, off, is it Highway 80 or 40 or whatever, off Ohio? He has several acres and he's willing to donate five acres to the Kansas Humane Society because it's in dire need of, of, you know, there's so many animals and dogs that don't have homes and aren't getting fostered, adopted. So I'm going to name it Where Rainbows Begin. And it's outside of city limits, so all dogs are welcome. And we haven't really figured out how we're going to have it, is if it's going to have a small park or, you know, a place where people can take care of them and hire people to do that. I mean, I'll leave that to Kansas Humane Society. But I want you guys to really take into consideration, you know, we have thieves, we have murderers, we have burglars, we have all these. And by gosh, they still get to be, be here in Salina. And they still walk those streets and, and have not been caught and stuff. And these dogs, you know, it, it's, it's something that needs to be changed. And I'm going to do everything in my power to go past, not just the state of Kansas, but, you know, I'm going to go higher and try to get rid of the BSL ban and make it a DDO ban, dangerous dog owners. You know, because this BSL ban is not, it is not stopping the dog fighting, the dog trafficking, the dog cruelty. It's doing none of that. And, you know, my heart, I was, I was a normal person. And, you know, my heart, I was a normal person when I first got here. I was blind and dealing with issues, but when they took my dogs from me, I think the thing that hurt me the most was the fact that I couldn't see them through the seven-month process. And, you know, that is my property, and I was denied my property. There's, I feel unsafe in my own neighborhood now, and I feel like I get harassed a lot. I don't know if I'm targeted because I'm blind, but I'm very educated, and I'm not deaf and dumb, and I would like to be, I would like to be in a court where I am treated fairly and with respected dignity, because I am a human being, and I'm a fifty-five-year-old lady with grandbabies, and I don't want them crying up. I never had to deal with something like that. I want my heart to be mended, and I'm going to do my hardest to, for the love of dogs. I don't care what breed they are, but I am tired of catching cases that I do not deserve while a woman has a baseball bat beaten on my house that in two thousand and eighteen.
I'd ask you to please wrap it up.
I will, but I want to make a point. A police officer pepper sprayed me after I called nine-one-one. He was a foot away from me. He saw that I was blind because he asked me, he told me to drop my sprays. Told him I can't do that. He goes, can't you see I'm an officer? I go, no, I'm blind, and he pepper sprayed me, and I got arrested, while this lady who beat on my house with a baseball bat got to testify against me. That's just one of the scenarios. And Jacob Wood, I never said I was going to sue fifteen times, but I am going to file many suits, and about fifteen will be included.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you for listening.
Former man in Salina, whether it's a park, a tennis facility, a sports complex, if you have artificial turf in it, it's causing cancer. If it has hydrocarbon issues in it, you've got environmental issues, water issues. PVC plastic is made of synthetic materials, so you're contaminating the water. We've already got a problem with this around here. When you do any development, have you ever used or asked for any U.S. Fish and Game reports? Because you're messing with environmental issues and endangered species. There's a bill in Kansas about our plastic issue. We've got all these plastic sacks because you failed to do anything with this plastic issue. They're addressing this in Topeka. Have you ever attended any farm shows to listen to the disaster we're having out in farming issues? They're shutting down the water wells in here and from here on west, so you ain't going to have the water from nothing. Wells in western Kansas, okay, homeless people are here, so what are you going to do, when are you going to address them? You've got a lot on your table you need to fix what we've got now instead of looking forward, because you're not going to get this fixed if you move forward. You're messing up. So why are you allowing this to happen?
It's two thousand and twenty-three, this environmental issue.
Can I comment on that?
Uh, no, no, ma'am. No, thank you.
There's no rebuttals. That's the rules. Ben Winholz, Salina. Commissioner Davis, I can answer your question about the old swimming pool. Back on September twelfth, part of the meeting that the, that we had on the tennis courts, which was just a, just a informative meeting, the director of parks stated that plans for the area basically included the north tennis courts being demoed at a cost of thirty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars. Pickleball courts possibly could be in there if somebody could come up with the money, because that was like four hundred and seven thousand dollars to do overlays on those to make them pickleball courts. But they also said, he also said that they were, there were plans in the long future of demoing the Oakdale Swimming Pool for a future building for Arts and Humanities for the River Fest, and they could also use that building for if they had weddings across the street in the Flower Garden area. The demo of the swimming pool was going to cost the city anywhere from fifty-one thousand to a hundred and three thousand. So there's your answer of possible future uses of the swimming pool is a demo where the costs keep going up for once the tennis complex is done and we have other things to do. They're talking about a parking lot at Sunset Park to take care of those three courts. That came in at, I don't have it in front of me, like two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot. It just keeps continuing. So there's your answer.
With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those, we'll see you next week. Thank you, everyone.